All right. Welcome, everybody. We've got an exciting night tonight. And welcome everyone at home, live streaming this. And I'm going to now call to order the December 10th, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education with all board members present. We will begin with A2, our flag ceremony, the Canyon Hills High School Navy or JRTC Color Guard will present the colors. Please stand for the presentation of the colors.
Forward, march. Guard, hold, order, arms. Camry, colors. Ready, cut, present, colors.
Trustee Baz, would you like to lead us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camry, colors. Ready, cut, order, colors. Ready, cut, port, arms, right, face, forward, march.
Please be seated. We now move to A3, the land acknowledgement. The land acknowledgement is a traditional custom that dates back centuries in many native communities and nations. Our land acknowledgement was developed in partnership with local Kumaii leaders. Students from the San Diego School of Creative and Performing Arts prepared the following video to show our respect for the Kumaii people who are the original stewards of the land our school district now occupies.
We respectfully acknowledge that the Kumaii people are the original inhabitants and caretakers of these lands now known as San Diego. Despite the attempted genocide and ongoing impacts of colonization, the Kumaii spirit remains unbroken and their traditions continue to thrive as they carry the memories of their ancestors who bravely resisted cultural erasure and fought to protect their land and way of life.
In honoring their legacy, we pledge to uphold their cultural heritage and right to safeguard their sacred connection to the land for future generations.
With gratitude and strength, we stand with the Kumaii, embracing the past while forging a brighter tomorrow.
Thank you. We will now move to item B, adoption of the agenda. We obviously have a very full agenda this evening and will consider a variety of items, including charter petition renewals, the first interim budget report, and associated financial audits, 2026 legislative priorities, and proposals to negotiate term sheets for joint occupancy at five district sites. I'm going to propose some changes to facilitate proceedings tonight, given the nature of some of the, the nature of the public comment and the quantity of comments. And we're going to move some of the items back and some of my items forward. So if you'll bear with me on this right now, I'm going to do that. I want to make sure that we're going to get this right because it doesn't look like my comments are exactly right. So this is.
This is correct.
Yeah, but see how H8 is first. We're actually on H12. Yeah. So, okay. So what I propose to do is move up our financial audit reports. Our auditor has some constraints, a flight, actually, so we need to get that up front. And then we have our charter petitions, which are sort of distinct from our, of our, for our normal topics, and we'll get those out of the way. That would be items G1, G2, and H13. Those are all related to charter school petitions. And we'll leave the student, student advisory presentation, because we have some students here, we'll, we'll leave that where it's, where it is. And then with regard to H8 through H12, we're going to take, move forward H9, 10, move, move forward H9, 10, 11, and 12. And then right behind that, put H8, given that that is the bulk of our comment tonight. So we'll try to get through some of the, some what are apparent from public comment, public signups are some of the easier items. And then we'll follow that with H8. Are we following? Is board following? Okay. And then after that, we will come with our traditional board, which is, which will be the remainder of the agenda, as well as H14, the annual election of officers. Is that clear to you, Marty, at least? I know, I know what I'm saying, but, okay. We're going to land this plane. So I would entertain that, that motion. Trustee Barrera with a motion and trustee, or Vice President Barrera with a motion and trustee Hazen with the second. We have a motion and a second. We will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. Trustee Hazen. Oh, okay. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. All right. We have ourselves an agenda, and I believe that places us right out of the gate with the student advisory board. C1, a report from a student advisory board member, Erin Widmer, and I believe you have another, another participant as well.
I would like to invite up Erin and Catherine. So while they're walking up here, I just wanted to give a little overview of what the student advisory board has been doing. So as many of you know, Ash and I have been really collaborating with the student advisory board to enhance student communications. And one of our key focus areas we've been working on is developing a public service announcement to help push out the anti-vaping campaign, as well as creating materials to increase awareness about the student advisory board. And through that, a significant part of this initiative was involved in working with our student engagement intern and our other intern from San Diego Met. So I'm not going to introduce them because I'm going to let them do that themselves, but please welcome Catherine and Erin.
Hello all. My name is Erin. Okay. My name is Erin Widmer, and I'm a senior at the SD Met. This semester, I'm interning with the Office of Investigations, Compliance, and Accountability, the ICA. My internship goal this semester was to increase student access to ICA resources, information, as well as district policies. So with this, I talked with previous ICA interns, board members, and the student advisory board members, and I found that many students were unaware of district resources, as well as key policies. Specifically, the policies including sexual harassment, discrimination, and misconduct. Part of my project was to improve the student know your rights page. This page is a central page with a lot of students, right, sorry. And so I wanted to update this content and make it more accessible. So while working on this page, I realized a need for a one-stop shop for students to have access to relevant information, as well as policies. So there were several different pages with great information, but I wanted all the links to be in one place that was easy accessible for students. So I collaborated with the student board members to integrate the centralized resources with all the links on the student hub. So I partnered with, as well, the district communications office to get the student hub on certain high school websites. So as we can see here, this big red or purple student hub button is on the top corner of the district website, and this is my updated, easier to read, more accessible site in the blue. And then we also got the student hub button on the San Diego Met High School, UC High School, and Mission Bay High School websites, seen right here in the yellow. This is example from the Met High School website. And so it's now on these websites, and I hope that it will get placed on the rest of district school websites in the future.
Hi, my name is Catherine. I am the student engagement intern for the secondary office. So I've been working with Erin throughout the semester on her, on the student, updating the student hub. I'm working with our ASP presidents throughout the district to get the student hub button to be placed on all their websites as well. As Ashley and Alina mentioned, we have been working a lot with our student advisory board to promote the anti-vaping campaign that has been proposed by trustee Bazza and trustee Ordaz about, we've been working on promoting it, making sure students know that there is an opportunity for them to promote their videos and create posters and camp, for our, for this campaign. We have also been working on creating a video for our student advisory board to promote it for schools that, we are currently missing a couple of schools that do not have students to represent on the student advisory board, and we're working to, to have them on our board as well. I've been working a lot on updating this website, expanding our resources, and working on updating the student engagement website, which is also linked in the student hub. It's almost completely updated, and I've been working on posting more on this, the students' SDSUSD Instagram page as well. Thank you so much for having us.
Well done. Is that trustee's Ordaz and Wen? Is that the totality of the, okay, great. Thank you so much. And I, in my haste, I neglected to prompt Ms. Stolz. No, we should actually have you read this out. We have a very intensive meeting this evening, so.
Okay. Cody says I have to read it. Please excuse my voice, it's a little raspy tonight. Today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public, and board members will not engage in a dialogue with members of the audience. Board bylaw 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side, pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda comment. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. And tonight, I will be calling up groups of four or five people to come and line up at the podium. Speakers participating via Zoom will be asked to unmute when their name is called. If you are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Please follow along with the agenda so that you know when your item is coming up for discussion. When you begin speaking, the green light below my name on the dais indicates that the timer has started. When the light turns yellow, you will have one minute remaining. A buzzer will indicate that your time has expired. If you have not yet done so and would like to sign up for in-person public comment, iPads are available in the back of the auditorium and in the lobby.
Thank you, Marty. Worth the wait. We will, oh, from what I understand, is our auditor still stuck in traffic? Curious, curious here and curiouser. Okay, so let's begin tonight's fun by acknowledging that our auditor is still stuck in traffic, who we moved forward to accommodate. And what, so what we'll do is, we will, I will entertain a motion. Can I just, I'll just modify it on the fly here. And we will now move our auditor after our charter petitions. And so we will proceed with our charter petitions. Oh, I'll entertain a motion to do that. Thank you. I appreciate that. And we have a second from trustee Bazza. We have a motion and a second. Student trustees, please vote. Come on, lucky lady. And all remaining board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously, student trustees concurring. We have a new agenda. And that will bring us to our, our charter petitions, and the first of which is G1. Now, to be clear, this is a second reading from my recollection. This is the King Chavez Community High School's charter petition renewal. I'd like to ask Deirdre Walsh if she's in the room. Hopefully, she's not delayed in traffic. There she is. Director of our charter school's office to come to the dais and present the item. A first reading of this item was conducted on November 18th, 2025. Welcome.
Thank you and good evening. That was essentially my presentation for this renewal item. Staff is recommending approval of the renewal for a five-year term, beginning July 1, 2026, and ending June 30, 2031. Staff report includes a summary of the charter petitions and renewals for the school, enrollment data, and fiscal analysis, and tables five through 10 summarize the academic results of the school and the staff's findings regarding the renewal criteria.
Thank you, Deirdre. We have, we have a motion from trustee, or from Vice President Barrera to move staff recommendation, and a, and a second from trustee Wen. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this item? To be clear to the public, we heard extensive comment from the public and had discussion on this item several weeks ago. So any further discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote on this item as well. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. Congratulations. It's easy the second time around. So with that, we will move to our, don't go anywhere, Deirdre. With that, we'll go to item G2. Yes, we'll go to item G2, Urban Discovery Academy's Charter Petition Renewal. A first reading of this item was also conducted on November 18th, 2025. Ms. Walsh, please present the item.
Thank you. So this item is for the renewal of the Charter of Urban Discovery Academy for a five-year term, also beginning July 1, 2026, and ending June 30, 2031. And also approval of material revisions to remove grades nine through 12 from the charter petition, remove a facility located at 1400 Park Boulevard, and relocate students in grade seven and eight to the facility operated by the school at 14th Street, all effective July 1, 2026. Staff is recommending a renewal of the charter and approval of all the material revisions. And again, the staff report includes a summary of the charter petition and renewals, enrollment data, and fiscal analysis, and tables five through eight. And this staff report summarizes the academic results for the school and the staff's findings regarding the criteria for renewal.
Thank you, Deirdre. Do I have a motion on this item? Trustee Wyatt's Payne with a motion, and trustee Ordaz with the second. We have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. Congratulations. Elvis has entered the building. We will now consider item H13, action on material revision to, of Albert Einstein Academy's charter to modify the dual-language immersion program, postpone the opening of the Albert Einstein Academy's High School to fall 2028, and change the location of administrative office. Ms. Walsh, please present the item.
Thank you. Yes, so Albert Einstein Academies has submitted material revisions for the three items that you noted. Within a charter term, a charter school may request approval to revise its existing charter, but the material revisions may only be made with the approval of the authority that granted the charter. In reviewing material revisions, we're guided by the Charter Schools Act, which is the foundation for the creation and operation of charter schools. It is expressly written in the act that charter schools are intended to be separate and autonomous from the school districts. In alignment with, alignment with this intent, Albert Einstein Academies is an independently-operated charter school with its own leadership team and governing board, and is recognized by the state as a local educational agency. Based on this independent status, the school is solely responsible for decisions regarding its operations and educational program. Because the district does not operate the charter school, the review of material revisions is limited to ensuring that the proposed revisions do not violate California Education Code or any other applicable law, and that the school will remain fiscally stable if the revisions are implemented. The three proposed material revisions were approved by the Albert Einstein Academy Board on September 9th, 2025. The first revision is to modify the English-German Dual Language Immersion Program. The revision replaces the dual immersion program with a German-language program. The school identified several reasons for submitting the material revisions, which we've included in the staff report for you. We've also included the written changes to the charter petition, so you can see the actual language that will be changed within the charter petition itself. The second revision is to postpone the opening of the high school to fall of 2028 due to material supply chain and scheduling delays. Table four provides an updated simplified construction timeline for this project. And the third revision is to change the location of an administrative office that the site, the school currently has on the high school site. But due to upcoming construction on the site, it's necessary to temporarily relocate the administrative office. We reviewed the Albert Einstein Academy finances to confirm the school's ability to pay the increased rent and for financial sustainability. The monthly rent expense does not materially reflect, affect the projected ending fund balance for the school, which remains well above the minimum reserve requirements, and none of the revisions appear to violate any current laws. Staff is recommending that the board grant the proposed revisions to the charter. I assume one question that will come up is, if the revisions are not approved, what will happen? In that case, the school will continue to be out of compliance with its current charter, and we would issue a notice of violation to the school. We would provide them with 60 days to correct the violations. If they are unable to, then we would issue a notice of intent to revoke the charter, and that is the first step in a revocation process. Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion on this item? I have a motion from trustee Wyatt's Payne and a second from trustee Hazen. We have a motion and a second, and with that, we have a motion on the floor. We will now receive public comment. Presumably, there are some speakers on the side of H13.
Yes, we have 15 in-person speakers and six virtual. In order to hear from everyone, you will have one minute. I'm going to call groups of four to get to the podium, please. Axel Schwartz, Brad Backyell, Alicia Mandela Edmondson, and Sabrina Bochin.
I am asking you, number one, reject the proposed charter change. Two, investigate our school's governance and finances. Three, remove Superintendent David Choretta from our, if our board refuses to do so. The charter change process excluded parents. The superintendent refused meetings for nine months. Communication came via holiday emails after enrollment deadlines. German instruction was reduced without notice, and the new charter language allows complete program elimination. Our school is in crisis, losing students, teachers are underpaid, our principal fired improperly, and union efforts met with potential union busting involving middle school students. Our board elects itself with unlimited terms. Four reelected each other in under two minutes in October. There's no accountability. Most critically, over $300 million in taxpayer construction funds were received by our school or are being received by our school. Our middle school cost $16 million, yet the similarly sized high school is budgeted $170 million with no public accounting.
Thank you.
My name is Brad Backyell. I'm the Director of Business Services for Albert Einstein Academies, and I'm here to speak in strong support of the material revision to our charter, including the new model for our German-language program. AA has always been committed to multilingualism and global education. The proposed revision strengthens that commitment by creating a sustainable, equitable, and highly qual, high-quality German program that all students can reliably access. Over the past year, AA has engaged in extensive analysis, staff input, and community feedback to design a model that maintains daily German instruction, aligns with best practices, and ensures program's stability for years to come. This change is necessary, as hiring qualified German teachers has become increasingly difficult across the region and internationally. Our previous model was no longer feasible. This revision allows AA to meet its charter promises in a realistic, sustainable way, while continuing to offer a rich, immersive German-language pathway.
I'm an Einstein parent and longtime English teacher at Crawford High here in San Diego. When we learned that David Choretta was violating the school's charter, we investigated. Many people were afraid of retaliation from David, but we heard what, what we heard was shocking. A huge drop in teacher morale, multiple lawsuits, underfunding of essential services, and financial mismanagement. The school used to have a waitlist. Now families are leaving in droves. David Choretta and his few supporters claim families who want German are elitist. That is false. Many of us are second-language learners ourselves and know that learning languages opens doors to a wider world. We want that for all students. David's actions are harming students, families, and teachers. Einstein teachers make less than any teachers in the county. David makes almost 30 times the per-student salary of the top county superintendents. Even worse, there are multiple investigations into concerns about the purchase of the site for Einstein's future high school. Suspicious appraisals and cost overruns, almost $100 million worth, have us all asking, where is this money going? Please vote no on the charter change. David Choretta needs to be removed.
The next group would be Stephanie Measures, Cole Jones, Arthur Congo, and Kristin Rubien.
I'm not Stephanie Measures, but she had a family medical emergency. Would it be possible for me to read her statement?
We don't allow deferal of time.
Okay.
I'm Cole Jones, a school parent and board member of Friends of Einstein nonprofit parent organization. I come from a family of educators and financial professionals, and here are my observations. Most families were unaware of the program change, that this program, the 50/50 program, had been neglected for years. Also questionable leadership, perpetual and verbal emotional abuse from the board's leadership towards teachers and family, all of them being women. That's what brought me the most. Financial steering away from this. We saw constant reports from the board on a conscious shift away from it over time, so this is not, you'll hear economic concerns, but there's been a long-term conscious effort for this. Personal vendettas, passive events appear to be created racial tensions, that leadership has been acting on a vendetta, propagating division and disparaging concerned teachers and families. There was financial support that was offered. This was not accepted by the board. And scoping in terms of principle being acute, being scopied for the only fault, which was poor communication of everything.
Hi, my name is Christine Rubien. I'm a board member. I'm also a German professor at San Diego State, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the process of redesigning the program. The program responds to this dramatic, just drop-off of people in the German teacher type pipeline. This will not change. It might change a little, but not dramatically. So this is the reality we inhabit. The program, the new program responds well to the challenges. It was designed over the course of two years. It sends really intentional benchmarks for proficiency. I think it's a program that could serve as a model for foreign language education on the elementary level, and I have full confidence that it will, it will work really well for the students, especially given. work really well for the students, especially given that AEA has grown from a small school with German and English speakers to an urban diverse school, and students who don't speak English or German as their primary language are not well-served by a dual-immersion program.
Hello, Arthur Congo with the California Charter School Association. Just to speak on some of the realities, San Diego Unified is the author, is the authorizing body of Albert Einstein Academy. The charter office issued a letter of concern to the school in regards to them not following their charter and concerns to some English language development issues. The school is responding to those concerns with this material revision. The school has already implemented some changes to their English language development program. If you look at the state's dashboard this past year, English learner progress indicator, English learner progress indicators, English learners and long-term English learners, both are in the blue with an increase of students making progress of 23.7% and 23.5% respectively. Additionally, the percentage of English learners who decreased at least one ELPI level was cut in half. I think what the previous speaker spoke about in just the realities of staffing, there are visa concerns with the federal government currently that's kind of influencing the pipeline of educators that Albert Einstein was able to call on initially. It's just responding to the situation that they've had to deal with. Thank you.
Timothy Liu, Isabel Trevino, Veronica LaRoche, and Cindy Alvarez.
Hello, I'm Timothy Liu. I'm a parent of a fifth grader at Albert Einstein Academy. I'd like to, to speak in opposition of the cancellation of the 50-50 instructional program. Given some of the things that I've heard just now from supporters, I'd like to say ways that the administration has not supported the German program is that the German library librarian position hasn't been filled since the 2023-24 school year. There is no more German tutoring for new students who need help in German. The German music program has been reduced, and German interns from Germany are no longer available. One thing is that Birgit Schaefer, one of the founding members who maintained and created the reliable pipeline of teachers recruiting in the school, was harassed into early retirement. And most recently, the principal has been dismissed. Also, the board is very insular, and the rules make them unresponsive to parents and teachers and students.
I urge you to carefully consider how the 50-50 German immersion program affects, affected our students in special education. Students who were being required to learn critical academic content in a foreign language while missing key instruction in English. As both a parent and an employee, I, with the daughter who has an IEP, I've seen firsthand how the 50-50 immersion model placed many students, especially those with IEPs, and our growing population of English learners at a disadvantage. While well-intentioned, the program's outcomes were not equitable for all. A model designed to enrich should not by its structure, exclude, or hinder. It's time to rethink how we serve all students, not just those who thrive in immersion. We need a redesigned program that is inclusive, flexible, and equitable, so that every child, regardless of learning needs or language background, has a fair chance to succeed. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cindy Alvarez, and I serve as the ALPA coordinator for both campuses at AEA. I'm here tonight to express my support for the proposed revision to our charter and the updated structure of our elementary German program. As someone who works with, directly with English learners every day, my priority is to ensure that all students develop lot, strong English language skills, so they can thrive academically, socially, and long-term. The revised program offers a solution that better meets this, the needs of all our learners. The updated German model provides a structured language class while still allowing us to focus on what our English learners need most: a strong foundation in English language development. By shifting away from the 50-50 language immersion model, we can ensure that English learners receive the targeted instruction and support required for their, for their language growth, while all students continue to benefit from the meaningful exposure to German. This change is thoughtful, student-centered, and aligned with our responsibility to provide equitable access to language and academic success. Thank you.
Laura Anselmo, Tiffany Finstad, Rita Gonzalez.
Good evening. My name is Laura Anselmo. I'm a mother of third-grade student at AEA and an ELAC committee member. So my son's first language is Spanish, so this is the reason why he is still developing of his English skills, and he has not yet passed the ALPA test. For this reason, I support the decision to teach German at his own subject. I believe this structure better supports students who are still learning English. However, I'm concerned about the limited instructional time. Students currently receive only 45 minutes of German four days a week, just three hours a week. In my opinion, this is not enough time to maintain the level of German they were so hard to build in pre, in previous years. I believe that at least one to two hours for day, five days a week make a real German progress. Thank you.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Rita Gonzalez, and I've been an employee at AEA for the past 17 years. I am here to support the revision of our charter school for all the students that we currently serve at AEA. Over the past 10 years, our demographics have changed. Where once our school where everybody spoke German, even I learning, is now where some of the teachers are having to teach in English due to the student population that we serve at AEA. We, I had at one point German teachers coming from Germany. That is no longer the case. The reason why we have to support this is because there is, not that there is a lack of looking for teachers, but there is no German teachers. As far as students leaving AEA, some of our family members are also living due to the fact that they are being taught another language, our core subjects in another language that they do not unders, do not understand, and our testing is in English, not in German. AEA strives on meeting our students as per their needs. So I encourage you guys to approve it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Finstad. I was called up, but I'm actually supposed to be commenting on H8.
We have, we have several virtual speakers on this item. Erin Bauer. If Erin is available, please unmute. You have one minute.
Sorry. We have two speakers that had signed up as in-person speakers that are on Zoom, though. Is it possible to have them called up on Zoom as well? Their names are Natalie Cook and Isabel Trevino.
Natalie Cook is in person instead of virtual. Natalie, Isabel, is Natalie here?
Yes, hi. Are you able to hear me? I actually signed up for both because I wasn't sure which one I'd be able to do, so.
Okay, you have one minute.
Okay. I, so, again, the district should not approve this proposed language. I oppose what is being submitted to you. We chose AEA for its promise of true immersion. Learned later that that had not been true for a long time, and yet the website continued to claim this. So a lot of parents took their children there, hoping to have them be fluent. District and state immersion definitions require at least 50% instruction in the target language, which AEA has not met for years. This is misleading, and it took away the opportunity for our children to become fluent. There is a pattern of lack of transparency and misleading parents about the German instruction, and I will speak from personal experience. My daughter's German has gone down this year. She usually receives high marks in German, and this year has not. Children are sponges and can speak multiple languages. I myself spoke multiple languages at this age, and not being able to speak one language did not impact my ability to learn another one.
Thank you. Erin Bauer. Is Erin Bauer available? Leila Oberdorfer. Mary, excuse me, Mary Klausser. Okay, we'll go back to Erin Bauer.
Hello.
That's Leila. Go ahead. You have one minute.
Hi, this is Leila. Hi, my name is Leila, and I'm a parent of three AEA students. My children have been at AEA since kindergarten, and the German immersion program has been one of the most meaningful parts of their education. It has shaped the way they think, communicate, and understand the world. When we were accepted into AEA, we felt incredibly fortunate, because true immersion programs are rare, and this one has always been at the heart of the school's identity. Over the years, families have watched the immersion model slowly diminish, often without clear communication. For longtime families, this has been disappointing, and for newer families who enrolled specifically because the school promised a full German immersion experience, it feels deeply unfair. They sign up for something unique and valuable, and losing that promise is a real loss for the children. The immersion program is not just a curriculum feature. It is the foundation of AEA's mission, culture, and reputation. It builds cognitive flexibility, cultural awareness, and a sense of belonging in a global community. Protecting it protects what makes AEA special. I urge you to preserve and strengthen the immersion model that has benefited so many students and attracted so many families to the school. Thank you.
Mary Klausser. Sheila Jolly. Jessie Chatigny, Chatigny. Pam Gasko. Or Jessie Chatigny.
Hello.
Thank you. Go ahead. You have one minute.
Okay. My name is Jessie Chatney. I've had three kids go through the German immersion program at Albert Einstein, and I would just like to highlight the fact that the germ, the, the board and the direct, and the director, superintendent keep.
Take a shower, please.
I'm sorry. They keep highlighting the idea that it's very hard to find German teachers. I think what you'll find is that it's very hard for them to retain German teachers. It's very hard for them to retain many teachers if you look at the data, just because what they're asked to do is impossible for very little money. And I want to push back on that and double down on asking for a forensic accounting of finances and also a review of how board members are elected, and it seems like a very closed cycle, more and more so in the last five years since 2020. Thank you.
We'll do one final call in case anyone is there virtually.
I'm here.
Pamela Gasko. Go ahead. You have one minute.
I'm speaking from a personal experience. I oppose this. I had my two older kids start at Albert Einstein Elementary School at third and fourth grade. They went through the elementary school. They did great in, with the German immersion program. Not only that, my youngest, oldest, had, 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 still has an IEP, was an English language learner, and learning German improved her English. She had graduated from not being an English language learner, so this new census that they're doing, it's not going to be helpful. Not only that, I feel like leadership really needs to listen to parents, and they're not doing that right now. I now have a TK and a first grader there, and I can see the exact opposite of what was being serviced to my older kids than what is given now. Thank you.
Sorry. Both Isabel Trevino and Mary Klausser are on Zoom with their hands raised. They're just waiting to be called on.
Mary, Mary Klausser.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have one minute.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that I would ask the board to vote against this change in charter. The German immersion program is central to AEA's identity and to why so many families choose this community. Again, this is a charter school, so people choose to come to this school. This proposal threatens to dismantle our community, and I urge you to slow this process or to vote against this until the families in our community have been collaborated with appropriately. I would like to see the foundation of this school honored. The school was founded for a certain purpose, and I think that it should remain that. It's unique to our San Diego community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Erin Bauer. Or Sheila Jolly. If neither are available, that concludes comment on this item.
Excuse me. I have been unmuted. I was, they called my name in person, but I'm actually on Zoom.
Okay, I thought you were in person. Sorry. Go ahead, Isabel.
Sorry about that. Thank you. My second grader at AEA is designated as an English learner. We speak Spanish at home. Just like every family enrolled in AEA, we chose it over our neighborhood school. The learning of another language develops neural pathways that help them in so many ways, and I want to share that my second grader can now read in Spanish because of what she learned in the German classroom. She tried to read a book in Spanish the way she reads English, and she got very frustrated. But then her older sister said, just read it in German, because both languages are very close phonetically. My kid was so proud and said to me, learning German is helping my Spanish. Please do not remove the German program that makes AEA so unique and justifies its charter. AEA is currently going through a huge crisis highlighting many concerns related to the current superintendent. Please postpone your vote today, because the action you're voting on is heavily driven by his own agenda and does not reflect the views of the AEA community. Thank you.
Erin Bauer, you have one minute.
Hello. My name is Erin Bauer, and my child is a six-year-old first grader at AE Elementary. In January 2024, I toured AE Elementary and was shown on-site how the 50-50 German immersion program was conducted. The same year, my child was accepted by a lottery, and we enrolled. His kinder year was taught by a German teacher, but the S-50-50 model the school was founded on appeared to be feeling, fading, and now in our second year, it's fleeting. The AEA Board of Trustees and Superintendent are requesting approval to destroy what the founders worked so hard to create in 2002. The board and superintendent's opinions and requests today absolutely do not reflect what the student body and families want. We want what we signed up for, an IB German immersion program. I respectfully request you table this, or at least oppose it, oppose it, or table it for a minimum of 12 months, until you can be provided with a comprehensive account of the facts, not unsupported opinions of a board and superintendent who are in hot water with a majority of AEA families currently for incompetence, bad behavior, poor decisions, lack of transparency, among other items. An approval today would be the wrong decision. Please don't fail our students. And to the AEA Board of Trustees and Super.
That concludes comment.
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we have heard from the public. We will now move to board discussion. Do any of my colleagues have any comment or questions? I will say, presumably on somewhat on behalf of, oh, trustee.
I think just a clarifying question to ensure everybody's clear what we're voting on. So I'm wondering, Deidre, if you can reiterate, we are voting simply on these three changes, and the only alternative, if we were to oppose this, would be, as you described, to move forward with revoking a charter. Is that correct?
That is correct. So today's action would be a vote on the revisions to the charter to modify the dual-language immersion program, to postpone the opening of the high school until fall of 2028, and to change the location of an administrative office. Those are the only three items that are being voted on. And you have it correct that if the revisions are not approved, so essentially what this revision does is modifies the charter to reflect what is actually being implemented in the language program at the school. Right now, the way the charter is written, the school is out of compliance with it. So if they don't come into compliance with what's written into the charter, we would issue the notice of violation. They'd be given a period of time to correct, which they, they have this issue. They this issue, they have been trying to correct it, they've been unable to correct it and that's how we got to this point. So we would give them probably a period of 60 to 90 days to correct it. If they are unable to, then we would be in a position of having to issue the notice of intent to revoke for noncompliance with the charter.
Thank you. And then also per some of the allegations around fiscal malfeasance or all these other issues, what we're voting on today doesn't preclude us from doing that work.
Correct. Those items are not part of this vote. I will add that as the authorizer for the charter school, we are an active authorizer. We do annual site visits to charter schools, we dig into their policies, their finances, a lot of different stuff that gets reviewed as part of our site visit. We also, just like a district and district schools, we review all of their financial reports that come in four times a year. We review their LCAPs for trying to match it up with budgets, so there is a very active review process that happens outside of what you're actually voting on today.
Thank you.
Trustee Wires Payne.
And there's a governance component that you look into because in the past, we've had several charter schools with issues related to governance.
Yes, that is-
It's not something that we would address here today like that, but there is a part that you perform to maintain legitimate governance structure.
Yes, that is correct. As part of our annual reviews and ongoing reviews of charter schools and part of our oversight process, we monitor board documents for charter schools, we observe and attend in-person board meetings, we do ensure that if a complaint is brought forward regarding governance or violations of bylaws, we have limited roles in looking at things that would amount to a violation of law. So we will follow up on some of those things. For instance, if there's an allegation that the Brown Act is consistently being violated, we will review those things, advise the school if we do feel that they are violating those types of provisions. So there is an ongoing component, but at the end of the day, the governing board of the charter school, because it is an independent entity, it is not part of the district, their governing board is responsible for the operations of that school.
So I would just say, obviously, without getting too deep into it, there's clearly some sort of crisis going on, that's clear. And I feel for the parents who testified here today and the administrators who testified. This is, obviously, just as a human being, you've got kids involved and you're in a moment of crisis. I would say, as a matter of law, we generally show deference to administrators and to the elected board, we are not the board of this institution. And frankly, in a scenario where we were proactively attempting to intervene in a way that was outside of our purview, it would be a very serious issue. So while I'm certainly moved by the testimony here tonight, at the same time, I'm going to, personally, I'm inclined to defer to staff recommendation with regard to what the board is requesting from us and presumably, we may, well, hear more about this later, but with regard to what is before us tonight, that's how I feel, just from a legal and professional perspective. So if there's any further discussion? With that, we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. All right. We will now move to our previously scheduled audit. This is items H3 and H4, I believe our auditor is in the building. These will be the external audit reports and financial statements. For item H3, the board is being asked to accept and approve external auditor annual financial statements for fiscal year 2024, 2025. For H4, the board is being asked to accept and approve the external auditor financial and performance audit reports for propositions S and Z, measures U and YY for fiscal year 2025. I'd like at this point to invite Michael McClary, Chair of our Audit and Finance Committee, and Jeff Jensen, representing Crow LLP, the school district's external auditing firm, to the podium to present these items. Thank you for being here this evening.
Hello, can you hear me?
Proceed, yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael McClary, I'm the chairman of the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee is formed by two trustees, trustee Whitehurst Payne and trustee Baso. Together with three members at large, we are tasked with overseeing the external and internal audit processes of the district before handing it over to our auditor. I'd just like to recognize my predecessor in the chairman role, Dan McAllister, who was a founding member of the Audit Committee, dedicated 22 years to that process. We look forward to continuing to oversee the internal and external audit of the district. I'd also like to thank the district and the auditors for working together as certain federal regulations that were required to finalize the report were delayed and they worked together and made sure that we were able to get a timely completion of the audit for today's meeting. So with nothing further, I'll turn it over to Jeff Jensen of Crow.
Great, thank you, good evening. I try not to take it personal when everyone gets up and leaves when the auditor comes to the podium, but it seems to happen all the time. And I appreciate your flexibility with me on the agenda tonight. As was mentioned, this year's audit went very smoothly and so I just have a few remarks to share with you and happy to answer any questions that the board might have. As was mentioned, we presented the draft report about a week ago to the Audit and Finance Committee meeting and presented what was a draft report at that time. And the reason for that was, as kind of alluded to, was our audit guide that we usually use to do our federal compliance portion of our audit was not issued until the week of Thanksgiving. And normally that's put out in July. So that really delayed our audit as well as basically every municipal and government audit in the United States that has to have a single audit done. But through the diligent work of your team, we were able to still get things to a draft status of virtually complete. And then when the new guide was actually issued the week of Thanksgiving and ensured that there was nothing that had changed in that guide, we're able to issue and sign final the audit for the year ended June 30th, 2025. Basically, every district in the state has an extension on their audit, normally they're due on December 15th and this year now they're due essentially at the end of January, but San Diego Unifieds will still be filed on time under the old kind of timeline, if you will. Again, and I think that's just a testament to the success of the audit for this year. So there are several opinions that are part of your financial statements and I think the important thing to take away from that is you received an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, so that's the type of opinion you want. That means your financial statements comply with all applicable accounting pronouncements and are free of material misstatement. As far as the numbers that were given to us to audit, there was only one adjustment this year and it was actually one that was given to us by your staff related to the captive insurance program and just the timing of closing those books was not able to make it in time by the regulatory deadline that you all have to file your unaudited actuals. So that was not an adjustment, that was something that we found as the auditors, it was something that was given to us. So I want to make sure that that's properly categorized in your minds there. As far as findings and recommendations this year, I would say, again, there's an improvement there over the prior years in the sense that there are a couple findings and recommendations in this year's report, but they're very minor and actually very immaterial, both from a fiscal impact for the couple of state comments that you have and then the one internal control comment related to associated student body is really something that the district staff continues to work to try to make that go away, but unfortunately, that's just one of those areas that oftentimes does have some areas for improvement related to internal controls. All in all, again, very clean audit results. Want to thank your team for all the hard work. You know, this audit started way back in February and has been going on in different pieces up until a couple weeks ago. So literally, there are thousands of requests that we asked for through that period and people that we meet throughout the district, both out at your sites and here at the district office and everybody is very cooperative and willing to share information on time with us, which allows us to be able to, again, render our opinion and sign final on that audit report. So again, I think very good audit results for you for this year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the audit report.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from the board on the other?
I just want to say thank you to the whole team because we've been very pleased in working with you all and I know you're cycling off for this year, one-year hiatus, but it's been great working with you guys and look forward to picking it up again when you can. And I want to also thank Mike McClary, no, McClary. We had McClary and a McClary on the committee, but Michael has agreed to take over the responsibility of chair and we're excited about that. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you, trustee. We'll have to talk to our student trustees about those ASB budgets, but I think we'll be able to figure that out. So with that, I think we've exhausted board discussion here. Do I, well, actually, we've exhausted our cross-examination of you and now we will move to a motion. Do I have a motion on this item? Trustee Wires Payne and the second one, trustee Baso, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion with regard to this item? Seeing none, we will move to our vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously, or those two motions rather pass unanimously, yeah.
I think I have the next item too, right?
Your next one, that's H-
Everyone tries to get rid of me too after the first one.
Yes, that's right.
I don't go away that easy.
Bring you in.
Thank you. So the second item is on your bond audits that were required to be completed for this year, so just as a reminder, the school bond funds that you have in agreement for passing under Proposition 39 and that lower voting majority of 55%, you're required to have a oversight committee, which you have, you're required to spend those funds for appropriate purposes, you're required of a financial audit, you're required to have a performance audit done on an annual basis. And so that's what this next items are here. And again, happy to report that you have unmodified opinions regarding both the financial statements for the bond funds as well as for the performance audit for the bond funds. And again, you have a very extensive bond program, you probably know that. And you also have a very rigorous audit report that goes well above and beyond the expectations that the state sets for the responsibilities under that audit to answer to the community, to make sure, you know, the concerns of the committee are being addressed and again, have no findings to report. And we shared that with the ICOC back in November at their meeting and again, just thank staff for the hard work there. Again, there's a lot of documentation just for the bond audits that goes into this process and everybody does a great job.
All right. So what I'm going to do is, well, I think we should amend that, amend it. The previous one, to be clear, I misspoke, was for item three and now I'm going to entertain a separate motion for item four. Do I have a motion on item four? Okay, trustee Wires Payne and trustee Ordas this time, we've got a motion and a second. Do we have any additional comment from the board on this item? Seeing none, we will now move to an item four vote. Trustees, student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. Item four also passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to work with the district.
Yes, safe flight.
Thank you.
All right, I was about to silence myself, only to realize that we're going to jump back into action. All right, so I believe we have cleared, cleansed our palate, cleared our plate here for the, I think we can say the main show this evening. And to reiterate, we have moved items nine, 10, 11, and 12 up and item H8 will be at the tail end and I believe we can handle these first four in a more expeditious manner and then leave ourselves item eight. So with that, I believe that Dr. Bula is going to introduce these items in their totality, the package as a whole.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Patterson. I'm having trouble with my chair today. Good evening and thank you for being here. Across our nation, I have been engaging in conversations with other superintendents that are facing similar issues, rising costs and declining enrollment. As a close to 30-year educator, I've seen many attempts to address these challenges, selling properties for one-time funds, cutting programs, authorizing layoffs, often while housing insecurity in their cities continues to rise and educators and families are pushed farther and farther from the communities that they serve. Selling properties for one-time funds gets fast cash that plugs holes in budget deficits and it's a practice that other school districts have enacted and the results were temporary relief with little to no long-term benefits for educators, students, or the surrounding community. Tonight represents a different approach. This board and this district are doing something bold, visionary, and deeply progressive. We are asking, what if a school district leveraged assets not by retreating but by reinvesting? What if instead, we used our land to strengthen our workforce, retain families, and stabilize our neighborhoods? This is exactly what this initiative represents. Our goals are simple and clear. We're striving to bring affordable housing to at least 10% of our San Diego Unified workforce and tonight, we're ready to take the next step toward making that vision real for our educators and for the region we serve. In the near future, 1,500 units of affordable housing will be built on five district properties, including right here on this site where we sit tonight. I believe deeply that our schools are at their best when the people who teach, support, and care for our students can also call this community home. Affordable housing allows our employees to live closer to the students that they serve, build meaningful relationships with families, and fully participate in the life of our neighborhoods. By retaining ownership of our land and entering long-term ground lease partnerships, we not only support housing affordability, we strengthen our district financially, generate ongoing lease revenue, and invest in the long-term health of San Diego communities. No other education organization has taken a step of this scale and this significance. This is what tonight's action represents. Because of both the outcome we are seeking and the values we uphold, integrity, transparency, and public trust, we've engaged in a process over the past 10 months. This process included clear budget priorities centered on affordability and labor standards, multiple public workshops, an evaluation committee with subject matter expertise, legal and regulatory consultation, and a competitive solicitation that resulted in 15 bids and five recommended contracts, all of which were made available to the public last week. That is a true commitment to transparency. The action before the board tonight is specific and focused, to authorize staff to negotiate term sheets for joint occupancy agreements with developers recommended by the evaluation committee. This next phase allows for rigorous vetting of financials, project feasibility, fully aligned with the law and with the best interests of San Diego Unified community. Since the docket dropped last Friday, the disappointment of those not recommended has been voiced and as superintendent, I understand that any process everywhere, no matter how strong, will always have refinements, but I want to acknowledge that the feedback has been both heard and received. It is also important to note that all members of the evaluation committee were required to declare no conflict of interest related to these projects or any developer, along while not engaging in any conversations in the evaluation process, to ensure an objective analysis and recommendations. We sit here tonight representing more than the school district. We represent an educational institution committed to creating a healthy ecosystem for our city, one that supports educators, stabilizes families, and strengthens neighborhoods. This initiative is progressive because it imagines what public institutions can do when they lead with this courage. It must also be done right, thoughtfully, lawfully, and transparently because it has potential to become a national model. With that, I would like to turn it over to Lee Dolgoff, our Senior Executive Director of Facilities Planning and Construction, and Deputy Superintendent Drew Rollins. I'm inviting you to come up to the dais, please, who will walk us through the five proposals and the rationale behind the evaluation committee's recommendations. Thank you, Dr. Patterson. I just had a lot to say about this because it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Faby. At our board workshop last December, we established audacious goals and guiding principles to build much-needed affordable housing. And then on March 25th, the board approved a resolution, issued the request for proposals, and at board direction, the RFP was structured to provide the proposers with flexibility. When this RFP was advertised on April 1st, we had no idea how the market would respond to our need for affordable housing. to our need for affordable housing. And, you know, following the advertisement of the RFP, staff facilitated a series of meetings and listening sessions at all five properties to understand the needs of each community. San Diego Unified was very fortunate to receive 15 proposals, and I'd like to express my sincere thanks and appreciation to all the developers and their creative teams that worked long hours on these proposals. The evaluation committee included district staff from real estate, finance, physical plan operations, facilities, planning construction, custodial services, a pair educator, a classroom teacher, a community member, and a San Diego real estate professional. And as you noted, none of these people had any conflicts of interest and signed affidavits to that, to that effect. Our volunteer evaluation committee waded through hundreds of pages of proposals, and Isiel Martinez and Troy Hickey are here tonight. I saw them earlier. And I want to say, thank them and the rest of the evaluation for all their hard work, acknowledge that diligent work that they did. These evaluation committee recommendations are advisory. The board, this board has an unenviable task of choosing a proposal for each property that best suits the needs of the district in public. This process mirrors the process we've used on past joint occupancy projects, and at this step with these votes, the board is not approving any leases, contracts, or projects. The board's simply being asked to authorize staff to meet with developers, complete due diligence, and negotiate term sheet followed by joint occupancy agreements to be considered by the board at a future meeting. If the due diligence or negotiations with the staff fail at a future meeting, the staff could request board authorization to meet with a second highest-scoring developer or to advertise another RFP. You want to?
Yeah, I should be clicking.
Click. Sorry. So I'll start with, I think H9 was the next one on the agenda. On the Revere Center property, Gifford Way, we received proposals from Decro Corporation, Community Housing Works, Monarch Group, and Ganges Development. The evaluation committee recommended Decro Corporation. Yeah, slipped through there. Yeah.
Sorry, trying to catch up.
So, okay. The evaluation committee recommended Decro Corporation, proposed 222 affordable units, community space, including a linear park, children play areas, a neighborhood dog park, multipurpose sports courts, and open space, and the proposed, proposal will construct a quality childcare facility and playground.
One second, Lee. Is your plan, we are doing this, a big, we're landing a big ship.
Oh, you want to make a motion to?
Well, is our plan, is your plan to go into, currently to go into all five or just to deal with nine?
No, just one at a time.
Okay. Let me introduce that motion then.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, Dr. I jumped ahead of the beat.
That's a very, very good preamble. I appreciate it. And I think I will also briefly, from the board's perspective, do a brief preamble with regard to all of these projects. This is a, we recognize this is a very big step we're taking, and so, you know, first off, I want to thank everyone who has or is about to provide testimony this evening, and I say has over months, years, provided testimony with regard to these sites. I also want to thank Lee Dolgoff and Drew Rollins and Lee's team, who have worked for a year on this, on this right now, and have developed expertise, the expertise necessary to put this before us over many, many decades, as well as our general counsel, Andre Green. And also, I want to thank Jennifer Lassar and her team, who has been our housing consultant. And I also want to thank the project proponents. You know, we would not be here tonight without their innovativeness and their labor. They worked a long time on these and put a lot of effort in, and toward that end, I want to go back to January, or December, actually, when we were first talking about this. And at the time, we did not know that we would even get bids on all our sites. We didn't know if the value of the ground leases and the high occupancy rates we were offering would offset the cost of the rent subsidies and joint occupancy facilities and the community-facing amenities, especially with the challenging state of housing finance. We didn't know if developers would find ways to subsidize the middle-income units for which many of our teachers qualify. We had to set parameters that both ensured that the proposal served the interests of our district and the values of our communities, and gave developers enough latitude to provide novel solutions rooted in their expertise and their resourcefulness. And of course, we're here tonight happy to report that that is precisely what we got. We got 15 bids, as Lee pointed out, on five properties, and we got diverse financing and design solutions to the challenges we posed. But before continuing, I do want to situate this work in our current national, state, local situation. The people on this dais and everyone in this room, particularly the youth, have spent their entire lives watching their housing costs soar and hearing their leaders, public and private, commit to attacking the affordable housing crisis. And they've seen very little for all those words. So much sound and fury. California now has the highest poverty rate in the country, driven largely by the cost of housing. It is throttling our economy. It's driving our students and their families into poverty and desperation and housing insecurity and homelessness. It's driving our families out of San Diego. We have somewhere around a little shy of a percent of secular annual decrease in enrollment, and that is overwhelmingly driven by the inability of young, working families to live in our communities. So this board and our staff will do a lot of talking tonight, but that is not ultimately why we're here. We are here to do, we are here to do everything in our power, within our purview, to house our staff, to house our families, to house our students. And frankly, if others will not act, we will. And I want to clarify that the people on this dais, we are not Yimby's, we are not Nimbys. As you've heard over many months in many public forums, we recognize that these SD/USD properties are in the heart of our communities. They are adjacent to jobs, to transportation, to transit, to restaurants, parks, and other amenities. We recognize that we will build housing where it should be, or eventually, others will build it where it shouldn't. And so, we've come to these proposals wanting the same thing we want every meeting, to deliberate and make decisions that serve the interests and values of our students, our staff, our families, and the broader community. And I want to point out what is unique and innovative about what we're doing, and that is in large measure due to the work of Lee Dolgoff and in consultation with Jennifer Lassar. And that is, and this model, it has enormous potential, not only for us, but also for all of California and ultimately, the entire country. It is a model that is elegant, and it has enormous potential to be replicated. CityLab, UCLA, and Berkeley, I think Turner was involved as well, found that, I think in 2024, their study found that there were 74,000 acres of developable property in the 1,000-plus school districts across the state. They estimated $2.1 million of potential units to be constructed. And the model we have used, I want to reiterate, it uses no taxpayer funds. It doesn't require a dime of the $205 million that we hard-lined into our last bond measure thanks to the voters of San Diego. We're not selling or giving away land. These are 99-year ground leases. They generate revenue. They are joint occupancy and serve additional education functions. And the benefit of, and this is important, the benefit of the affordability is not diffuse. It's very hard for agencies who cannot internalize the benefit of affordable housing development to do these developments. But for us, ultimately, our staff and our fam, and their families derive direct benefit from this. We can actually internalize the benefit of these developments, and not only that, ultimately, our students get teachers who live in the communities that they serve. And a final thing, it does not supplant the private sector. It provides opportunities to leverage the private sector's knowledge and expertise in order to find solutions that we honestly, as a public agency, housing is not our specialty, and we really rely on that, that expertise. So, and I want to say one last thing here, and this is, I have, I think all of us have struggled, this is a thing we have never done. We took a kind of a foray at Central Elementary in this with Affirmed last year, but we've never done anything of this scale, and I don't believe that any district in the country has ever done anything of it like this. And so, we're, in a certain sense, we're designing the process as we go, but one of the, one of the challenges in the way in which these appear on the, on the docket, they come in as recommendations. And we are very grateful for our evaluation committee for giving us recommendations. We take the recommendations very seriously. But ultimately, I want to reiterate, these are decisions that we will make as a board tonight, and we will deliberate in front of you. My proposal is to receive the staff introductions, receive staff evaluation committee recommendations, and then review the terms of the, in the docket item itself, which is internalize what our goals are, so each time to reiterate what the goals we were trying to achieve were, and then go through these proposals, one by one, in front of the public, and to, and to ensure that the, the selection we ultimately make is, it is very clear that this is a decision the board is making in consultation with our evaluation committee, but ultimately, it is our decision. And so, finally, it is, it's not my goal tonight as, as chair of this body to select one project or another project. Whatever we do tonight will be path-making. My goal here is to land these planes as efficiently, as fairly, and hopefully as elegantly as possible. So, you know, there'll be, there'll be some flack, there'll be people motioning us into one runway or another to land on, and it may get bumpy at times, but we will land this plane together and historically. So with that, now I will turn back to item nine, and we will start with item nine, which is the selection of the proposal and authorization for staff to negotiate a term sheet for a joint occupancy agreement with Decro Corporation to construct and operate 220 units of affordable housing, workforce housing at 6735 Gifford Way, currently the Revere Center. And now back to you, yes, Richard, would you like to say something?
Yeah, thank you, President Patterson, and I so much appreciate the comprehensive way that you laid out what's in front of us here with these, with these decisions, very much articulating, you know, the possibility, as did Superintendent Bungula. I think that, you know, as I've reviewed the proposals, and we've all done that in our different ways, and we're about to do that tonight, one of the things that I think is both exciting but also creates caution for, for me as a single trustee, is that on almost all of these projects, I think with one exception, we had multiple proposals that were coming at meeting the goals that we articulated as a board and that were clear in the RFP in very different ways. And I, so I think what's, what's come forward to us is, requires an opportunity for both us as a board and for the public to have a full vetting of all of the proposals or all of the viable proposals for each project. And I worry that by making this decision tonight, we're missing a step where we have an opportunity to have the different proposers come before the board, answer questions, and make the public fully aware of the concepts that are, that are being brought forward. And to that end, I would propose that we go through each of these projects, interrogate them, ask our questions, clarify our own, you know, values, our own preferences, but that we organize a special board meeting before the end of January, where the proposers can come forward in a public setting, make their presentations to the board, and allow the board to make a final decision at this stage on which projects we're, we're going to consider. So I will, I will make that motion.
You're making that motion in regard to what, what item?
All of that. All of that. Nine, eight, 12.
Okay, so, as I understand, Vice President Barrera is making a motion. It's unclear how to do this in relation to, to our operating procedures, but I will just take this as, as a motion, in a certain sense, out of order, but with regard to all of the motions, all of these items, H9, 10, 11, 12, and eight collectively, he is making a motion to, I believe, continue to go through all this tonight and then also have a workshop in January?
I just want to ask a clarifying question. When you say trustee Barrera, do you want to have all of the groups that submitted applications to have the opportunity to interview?
I do. Thank you, trustee Bozo. If the staff or the committee clarifies for us that, that there are proposals for individual projects that are simply not viable and sort of disqualified, then I don't think we should take our time, but the other proposals I am proposing that, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Okay, clarifying question? Sure.
To clarify the motion, does it apply to H11, for which there was only one bidder?
It does not. Thank you, trustee.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we have a second? Trustee Bozo seconds the motion. We have a motion and a second to proceed as agendized, but in addition to that, well, presumably also to then not have a vote at the, at the end of each item, except for, let's see, that would be H, oh, I think that's H11 is Cardinal, except for H11, which would be Cardinal. So that would be the motion which, on the floor, which is for H9, 10, 12, nine, 10, 12, and eight, would be to proceed as normally, but then not take a vote, and then have a workshop at some point in January, and then, but then on H11 to actually take a vote on that item. So that's the motion on the floor. We have a motion and a second. We will now open it for discussion. Trustee Wires Payne would like to hear from staff on that.
Regarding the motion? Well, it, the, it's, you are the deciding body, the, the, you had a panel of experts who provided a recommendation, but it's simply a recommendation, and there are a lot of factors in this decision. So, but you are the deciding body, and, you know, I think the, the board has the latitude to decide how it wants to handle the recommendation, whether you accept the recommendation or you decide to do, do something else with it, you know, and you can certainly, it may end up that you agree with the recommendation in the end, I don't know, but, I mean, it's not for staff to really weigh in on, I think, your, I mean, we've given you, the recommendation came from a 10-member panel, so no one person, including myself, really. It was a weighted vote. And, and we had an independent, independent consultants also review the, and look at the financial viability and comment on that, and, you know, Lassar and Kaiser Marston looked at this, so. So, there's a lot of data and a lot of time that's spent in developing a recommendation. However, you know, there are a lot of differences in these, some of these proposals and different visions, because we allowed for a lot of flexibility in the RFP. So, I'm kind of just giving you this from the heart, I don't know, is that, I hope that, I don't know if that helps.
No, that's helpful. I have served as the Chair of the Southeastern Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors, and we used to get proposals and so forth, staff, et cetera. And it's important that we understand and tighten up whatever it is we're after now. If we're saying we're going to expand it to January, and we want to look at something again, we need to be sure that our parameters are tightened, because I do believe in due diligence, that the committee did their best to narrow it down for us and to give us something to look at. I'm not opposed to us expanding it to January, but I do want folks to understand, because you can get in that cycle of going around and around until folks get whatever it is they're looking for, and that's not fair to anybody concerned. I don't know that there's a timeline that's absolute, we're on this deadline, a timeline, and it's an absolute timeline, but I do want us as trustees, who will be making this decision now and/or in January, to really understand what it is we're looking for, that we articulate it, and we verbalize it, it's in writing, so that we all understand fairly what's going on, and we don't waste staff and committee members' time when we are not clear on what we want to do, oh, here, but now somebody says this or that, or whatever. Let's just be tight about what it is we're looking for, and that once the proposal is tightened, or whatever it is we want to get, that we adhere to that and that we affirm on that, because you can always change, there's always something you can modify. As I said, I don't have any skin in the game in the sense that I'm not going to get a penny out of it either way. I've talked about the fact that this particular property, I live down the street here on Campus Avenue, I'm a part of San Diego City, and I want to see the best for this city and for our school community. That is my bias. And so, with that, if we vote to extend it to January, we all need to understand what we're committing ourselves to, and we get any, anybody who goes beyond that point, once we've gotten the RFPs out and the criteria specified, so that everyone understands, if you don't come forward at that point and say what your issues are, then you've nullified your process, so that we don't get here with all this work, and then, no, let's change it, we didn't understand, let's make it very clear what it is we're after. Sorry about that, but that's my sermon for tonight.
Thank you trustee Wires Payne. Trustee Hazen?
Thank you, I agree with trustee Waithurst Payne. I think it's critically important that we clarify for each of these projects the feedback we have. I imagine we're all prepared to provide feedback on each of the projects. And so, I guess I would ask that we, the President, if we could vote on 11, and then go through, as you had outlined, to share feedback, to see if we can get to consensus around our shared priorities, so that potentially in January, we can invite bidders back to provide additional information or their best and final offer, so that we can, at that point, vote on who we plan to move forward with, with final negotiations and development of a term sheet. And I guess, just for clarification, Vice President Barrera, is that your desire, that at that workshop, it would be both a presentation and a vote, so that we wouldn't be postponing the decision any further? Thank you.
Okay, I'll speak to the motion. I have, we've all been under enormous pressure from members of the public and other individuals to alter this process at the one-yard line, and I will just say, we have very clear parameters about what we're achieving here. That's what we did last year, we did that in December, we came and get back in March and established those. The public has come out in enormous numbers tonight to opine on it. We have, we have these proposals, they speak for themselves, they have diverse approaches to achieving this, and frankly, they're rooted in these developers' specializations, they're rooted in what they've done their entire careers, that's why they are, they're innovative, they're rooted in their, not just in innovativeness, in their specialties. You have developers that have specialized in low-income housing development, you have developers that have specialized in infill development, you have developers that have specialized in mixed-income developments, a lot of different things, and they've brought that expertise here. Frankly, I don't see what will happen if these projects are unchanged, you'll have to turn all your people out again. We will drag this out, there will be more pressure from a lot of parties to alter our decision. So, I will just read to you what our actual, what we spent a workshop doing, and we had a board meeting doing. I will read to you what our goals were for these projects, which were, quite simply, I'll read them right here, and then I will conclude by remarks in opposition to this motion. Development of district property should support affordable housing for classified and certificated staff. Housing is considered affordable when less than 30% of a family's income is spent on rent. Units developed on district properties should be responsive to the needs of employees with TK through 12 grade student dependence. Maximizing the number of affordable units is the highest priority, followed by securing ongoing revenue sources to supplement the district's budget. When issuing requests for proposals, districts should provide flexible parameters to elicit a market response. The vision to develop properties comes through community engagement and consensus with community and labor partners. Develop properties as sustainable communities in alignment with the state superintendent's housing initiative to encourage housing development in California and maintain ownership of district property. To me, I don't really see that there's any change. We have very clear criteria with which we are to compare these projects and select the prevailing project. I am opposed to this motion. Trustee Bozzo?
Thank you, President Peterson, and thank you for the comments thus far. And thinking about this, I think initially, I mean, I always appreciate our staff and support them, trust them, you know, they're really the experts in these, in this area. But, at the same time, you know, in coming out here, that was first what I was going to do, but after just, you know, again, hearing from various different people, I think the problem is, in the proposals, some of the writing that was involved, it's causing confusion. And so, that's why I think the idea of doing the interview, and this was a recommendation from LaSar, to take the top, the top bidding organizations, because sometimes what we, what's put down in a proposal may not come through correctly and accurately, so I think that's why I reconsidered this, and I think it's better that we hear from them to explain some of the things that, because a lot of questions have been coming up, and that couldn't just be answered from the proposal itself. So, that's why I think it's important that we do provide that additional information. But as trustee Waithurst Payne has said, that will be the end of it, we take care of it that night, so, thank you.
Thank you trustee Bozzo. Do I have any additional comment from the dais? With that, we will move to a vote. The nature of this item is to, or this motion is to proceed this evening, but on all items but 11 to not vote, and then on item 11 to vote on that, and then all four remaining items will then be brought back for a workshop, which will include discussion with the developers in January. Is that, does that reflect your motion? Okay. That is the motion on the floor. Student trustees, please vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. That motion passes 3-2, with students concurring with the prevailing side. That motion passes. So, with that, we will proceed a pace. We will now move to item H9, and have our discussion as originally planned, but will not vote on the items. So, with that, Lee, would you like to lead on H9?
H9 or H11?
No.
Oh, the IMC?
Okay.
Oh, H9, do you want me to walk through all the items?
Well, the motion was to proceed as normal, but if there was a motion to move the one item in which we will actually take a vote ahead, I will entertain that motion. Do I have a motion to move H11 ahead? Okay. A motion from trustee Hazen, and a second from trustee Wen. Is there any discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote on the motion to move 11 ahead.
I'll move 11 ahead.
All other trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. We will therefore now consider item 11, the vote on, my recollection is Cardinal Lane.
Yeah, okay, I'll just do a brief.
I will read the item real quickly, and we'll now consider item 11, selection of proposal and authorization for staff to negotiate a term sheet for a joint occupancy agreement with Decro Corporation to construct and operate 107 units of affordable workforce housing at a portion of 2441 Cardinal Lane, currently the Instructional Media Center site. Mr. Dogroff, please present the item.
Thank you, President Peterson. So, for the Instructional Media Center, we received a proposal from Decro. The evaluation committee reviewed and recommends the proposal, providing 107 affordable units. The height and scale of the project is consistent with other multifamily units in the neighborhood, and I'm here to take any questions if there are any.
Before I give you questions, we will take a motion on this item. Do I have a motion on approval of this item? Trustee Bozzo with the motion, do I have a second? Trustee Wires Payne with a second. We have a motion and a second, we will, do we have any speakers on this item? Ms. Tholz?
Yes, we're speaking on H11, correct?
Correct.
I'm sure. Yes, we do, let me get to that one. We have five in-person speakers, Armin Neshat, Fatia McCauley, and Henry Shea, if you could please come forward, also Margarita Shea and John Atherton.
Good evening, my name is Armin Neshat, Director of Real Estate Development at Decro Corporation. We are a nonprofit organization with 36 years of experience building affordable housing across Southern California, and for this proposal, we were joined by AC Martin as our design lead architect, and Bernard as our general contractor. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be recommended and considered for the Instructional Media Center site. As with all of our work, we started by listening. Input from district staff and neighbors and the community directly shaped a plan for 107 affordable and 108 total homes designed in an appropriate scale for this site and for this community. Our team studied the surrounding area closely, created a building that fits seamlessly. Its massing, its architecture, and its site design is all meant to feel like a natural extension of the neighborhood. The homes will serve households from 30% to 80% of area median income, with one, two, and three-bedroom units that are aligned, both, that are aligned with the district's employee housing survey, which demonstrates that a majority of district staff need at least two or three bedrooms. Our aim is to expand high-quality, family-friendly, thank you, thank you.
Just to confirm, this is one full minute? Okay, great. Hi, my name is Fatia McCauley, I'm the Chief Real Estate Development Officer for Decro Corporation. Thank you for your time and consideration, and for your support around the Instructional Media Center this evening. Our CEO Ted Handel could not be here this evening, our board is having its annual meeting this evening, and it could not be changed. We are, as Armin said, we are a 36-year-old affordable housing developer that's been operating in California as well as Florida. We've been doing this for a very long time, and this project really exemplifies what we do in terms of working with employed and unemployed people that need affordable housing, and that's such this kind of project. We are, again, California-based, and really, our focus is on providing dignified spaces that provide for a sense of community and well-being for residents and community members alike. And today, Decro owns and operates 24 affordable and supportive housing developments in our portfolio, comprising over 1,100 units. We applied to the school district to develop these projects, and they're well within our range for our development team. Thank you.
Good evening, illustrious board members. I can't opine on the need for housing here in the San Diego Unified boundaries more than Board President Peterson said and Dr. Bagula. Anyhow, what I'm going to say, because I have a 30-year history of building educational facilities in Southern California, especially in San Diego and for San Diego Unified, I will say that providing workforce housing isn't a luxury, it's a way of saying to our educators and staff, we see you, we value you, and we want you to be part of this community long-term. It's a practical solution to a very real problem, and it sends a message that we are committed to stability, not for just, not just for employees, but for the students who rely on consistent relationships with trusted adults. I hope the board continues to move this initiative forward, I believe it's one of the most meaningful investments we can make in the people who make our school, who make our schools work every single day. Thank you.
Excuse me, were you John? Were you John?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Henry Shea or Margarita Shea? All right, we also have some virtual speakers on this item, we'll start with Paul Greer. We have also Brian Eng. Paul Greer or Brian Eng? Margaret Stertavant or Katie Stertavant? Callie Greer? And P Torres, if any of you, yes, go ahead, Callie, you have one minute.
Oh, thank you, hi, this is Callie Greer, and I am a homeowner in Birdland, and I am opposing this project. Birdland, this street where you're going to put this apartment complex, we are a one-way in and a one-way out, we are built in a canyon, so we go far back, and we go down into a canyon, so, for safety purposes, I oppose this, because if there was an emergency situation like a fire, there would be no way those people that are the furthest away from Genesee and the 163 would be able to get out of there. It's also very impacted already by apartment villages, and you're, the area is on a dead end, so, the main route to get in and out will be impacted constantly, so I oppose it strongly. Thank you.
All right, we'll check our virtual speakers again, Paul Greer?
Yes, thank you very much, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, you have one minute.
So, I am a resident as well, I'm the wife of Callie who just spoke. Also, I'm a community college professor at San Diego City College. I've been living in this neighborhood for 20 years, and as Callie had mentioned, the safety of our neighborhood is in jeopardy with this plan. We already are overcrowded, and we are really asking this board and everyone else to consider not this site. It just will not fare well with traffic in the future, as well as, for many of us, we have to get to work and everything else, and it might prevent us from getting to work on time. So, it's not just us. So it's not just us. We have over 1,000 residents in this neighborhood, and as Callie had mentioned, it's one way in, one way out. This is not the way to go. Thank you for your attention to this matter and allowing us to speak our words.
Brian Eng? Margaret Stertavant? Katie Stertavant?
I think it can get on, that's what it is.
P. Torres, go ahead. You have one minute.
I'm sorry, hi. This is Patricia Torres. I've lived in this neighborhood for almost 29 years, and I live right on Cardinal Drive, and the parking here is horrible with the apartment complexes on Cardinal Lane. Everybody parks in front of our street. We can't even park in front of our house. People block our driveway, and the traffic going in and out of this neighborhood is really bad, especially with the school around the corner. I can't imagine if you build another apartment complex, what the parking situation is going to be here, and the congestion of coming in and out of Cardinal. And like the other people mentioned, in case of an emergency, there's only one way in and one way out, and I can't see having another apartment complex in our neighborhood that will just make it a lot worse. So I appreciate if you guys consider, people that live here, that you please do not build in this community because it's congested as it is already. Thank you.
I'll do a final call for Brian Eng? Margaret Stertavant? Katie Stertavant? Or Francis Thiss? They're not answering.
All right, looks like that exhausts our public comments. I'm going to give Lee another opportunity to describe. You want to describe in greater detail this project at all, or is that... I cut you off the first time, right?
No, no, it's okay. No, I really don't have much more to say. I mean, I think the developer did a nice job. There is a fair amount of multifamily, and there are single-family residents adjacent, and there are multifamily in the area. The project is parked, fully parked. We did hear a lot of concerns during our community listening session about traffic and congestion. I mean, I'll just tell you honestly, what I see from that area is most of the traffic congestion occurs because the two hospitals nearby generate a lot of average daily trips. So they've expanded dramatically over the years. So if those people that are listening... And they've added a lot of staff and a lot of patients and a lot of... And that's caused traffic, and the road infrastructure hasn't been dramatically... You know, I've watched this city grow up through my whole life, so I've seen this area. So what the residents nearby are saying is true, but I don't think that this project demonstrably changes that effect. I mean, it will add a few more daily trips, but not demonstrably. The big deal really is the traffic and access to those hospitals. And I think that's a bigger problem that requires a bigger solution. That's just my overall perspective. There are apartments just directly adjacent to... If you look at this aerial photo, you'll see an apartment complex that's right adjacent to our property. And so we won't be impacting the parking. So I do think this fits well in the neighborhood. You know, and I support the recommendation of the evaluation committee.
And the joint occupancy is actually district parking?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have... Thank you, Lee. Do we have any additional comment or questions from the board? Vice President Burea?
Thank you, President Pedersen. I just wanted to thank Decro and this proposal for the number of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units that you include in this. I think we were clear in our board discussions, our workshops, that we actually want to give opportunity to our employees who are themselves parents of students in our district. And I think by that unit mix, I think you're helping towards that goal. So I appreciate that.
Trustee Hazen?
Thank you, and want to echo Vice President Burea's feedback. I agree. I think it's really exciting to be able to bring online so many two- and three-bedroom units. I think it's really an exciting addition to the community. I really appreciate the clarification and feedback about parking. And I think the other thing, you know, in terms of the concerns that we've heard about parking, about traffic, and potentially fire safety, I guess, could you clarify, if those were concerns of the city, would we even be allowed to move forward with construction here? And can you describe sort of the city's role in this process in ensuring this is a safe place to develop more housing?
That's a great question and a great lead-in to it. The answer is, if the city doesn't feel that there is adequate access for fire access... In this case, there's access on two sides of the site, which is essential and helpful, very helpful. But if the city were to analyze the building permits and determine there were issues, they would require a modification of the project in order to make it... So the permitting, you know, won't go forward without that. So... And we're certainly anxious to work with the developer to make this project possible because it does support our families with more bedrooms, and we do appreciate that... This is a... Decro is a nonprofit affordable housing developer, so this is really their bread and butter. So I want to thank that team for coming out and proposing on this. They proposed another number of them, but their heart is really in this work, supporting nonprofits. So... But we will definitely certainly make sure that this does not impact the safety of the residents of this development or any of the other adjacent neighbors.
Thank you. I just want to make clear my commitment, and I think the commitment of this board, to ensure that all of these projects ensure the safety of every community where we intend to build, both fire safety, traffic safety, and that that work to ensure those things are in place is ongoing. Thank you.
It's an environmental impact study that has to be done. It's part of any process.
I don't know that there is an EIR with this. It's consistent with the community plan.
There's legislation that allows us to... I don't want to get into sort of the legal, but there is legislation that allows this type of project to be exempt under CEQA. That's something we will analyze, though. We'll analyze the full impact, yeah.
I mean, so long as it's consistent with the general and the community plan, that is your exemption document. So... And this is ministerial, which is required by RFP. Presumably, it won't, and level of service is not analyzable under CEQA, so...
Yeah, but at one point, that facility, we had a lot of employees over there in that area. I don't know, was I there one time in my long career in the district? Lots of cars, lots of traffic over there. And now we've more or less moved it out and got it that area so that there's a modicum, very few. So, I mean, it's like now we don't want to go back to what it was.
Your point is well-taken, that over the years, the district has actually reduced the number of average daily trip load on that particular street. So if anything, this sort of brings us back to what... Or it may bring us back. Of course, we have to have a traffic study and an analysis for me to be able to tell you a certainty. But it's likely we've reduced quite a bit over the years, and this is a major impact in comparison to all the other entities that impact traffic in that area, namely the two hospitals.
But I'd also point out with regard to the average daily trips and vehicle miles traveled and emissions, these are all our staff. So they're living somewhere farther away than this. So actually, by bringing them closer to their jobs and other amenities, we're significantly reducing ADTs, average daily trips, and vehicle miles traveled, and therefore carbon emissions. So this is overall a win, a sustainability win. Drew?
And just realize that some of the functions that are present IMC will move to the new education center when completed. So some of the portable buildings that are there will be demolished. So there is a change coming that I would suspect is likely to mean fewer district staff will be stationed there, if you will, as well.
And the elementary school fletcher will pick up any students there? I know it was small, really small at one time. I don't know what its population is now, but yeah, it'll help that school.
Yes, we're very hopeful that our staff that moved into these... Many of these developments, especially this one, will be staff that have students dependents that can attend our local schools.
Thank you, Lee. Any additional comment from the DIES? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote on the item. Student trustees, please vote. Oh, I believe Alina is absent. Okay. All other trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with Trustee Ordaz concurring. Trustee Wen is not currently present. Okay, with that, we will move... Congratulations to Decro. With that, we will move back to item H9 on our agenda, which is the selection of proposal and authorization for staff to negotiate... Okay, hold on. I'm just going to say this verbally because it's no longer this. We will now move forward with a discussion of the joint occupancy agreement that has been issued in RFP and received responsive bids for affordable workforce housing at 6735 Gifford Way, currently the Revere Center in Linda Vista. Mr. Dolgoff, please present the item.
Okay, well, I was... I'll sort of change my structure a little bit the way I was going to present these. So for the Revere Center property on Gifford Way, we received proposals from Decro, Community Housing Works, Monarch, and Ganji Development. The evaluation committee recommended Decro and their proposed 222 affordable units. On their project, the community space includes a linear park, children's play areas, a neighborhood dog park, multipurpose sports courts, open space, and the proposal will construct a quality childcare facility and playground with designated parking. There was... I did receive a question from at the last minute, so I'll just try to answer that question related to the revenue. So the revenue on the Decro proposed is annual ground rent revenue estimated at $318,728, increasing annually by 2.5% a year. There was another... And some of these proposals, some of these projects are fairly close in range. I think that... I'll stick with the Decro proposal just for a second. The committee really liked the way the childcare center was laid out on this particular proposal in terms of that it was a separate, distinct childcare center that had its own parking. It was a true, you know, a true joint occupancy in terms of the quality space that was dedicated for childcare. There was another proposal. I don't know if I want to get too much into specifics, and I don't have a lot of data, but I will tell you that some of the... Some of the other proposals, the way they described the way the rent was described, was harder to follow, you know? And I don't know if it was on purpose or not. You know, we're getting more clarifications, I guess. And we will get more clarifications than this one because it's going to come back. But staff had a hard time estimating potential rent because it came in as a potential or a percentage of receipts. So, you know, there's guaranteed money, and then there's a percentage of receipts or net operating income. Those kinds of things are a little bit less... Harder to predict, harder to fully, you know, understand. So in some of them, that's... If you see those comments, that's kind of what the... And Lassar and Kaiser Marsen have similar, you know, comments on those kinds of things. We did our best because we do think that there is potential revenue that was proposed, but it's harder to... It was a little harder to determine, and maybe that's something that if the board is going to interview these panelists, that they can dig a little deeper. That's my suggestion on when rent isn't guaranteed. What is it, you know, if it's a percentage of... In this case, a percentage of receipts, but a percentage of some other revenue that that could be more discerned or more guaranteed. Of course, staff will, after this step, staff will go and will negotiate a term sheet where we'll try to lock down not only the best and final from those proposers, but also lock down the terms so that it's more certain, so that we have, you know, something that we can take to the bank, if you will. And so that's... I don't know if that answered... That was a question that was proposed to me, and I'll just say I hope that answers it the best I can, given what we have. The other two proposals were very good, though, I will say. And the committee thought highly of them as well. So I don't want to prejudice the future discussion on this item to say that they, you know, I would say, you know, the other proposers all are worthy of consideration.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dolgoff, I'll call you. Thank you. So we won't take a motion because it's not... There is no motion to vote on. So we will now take public commenters on item H9.
Yes, we have 10 speakers on H9. Armin Neshat, Fatia McCauley, John Atherton, and Eric Schreiner.
Hello again. My name is Armin Neshat. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development at Decro Corporation. Again, we're a nonprofit with 36 years of experience in affordable housing development in Southern California. And for this proposal, again, we were joined by AC Martin and Bernard's. Our plan delivers 222 affordable homes for households at 30% to 80% AMI, and we're thrilled to include several community amenities that are already listed, including multiple parks, children's play areas, as well as a high-quality childcare center. Our proposal supports the district through revenue generation as well as a strong labor standards, which we formalized via a MOU with the San Diego County Buildings and Construction Trades Council. We look forward to partnering with the district and as well as working with the Linda Vista community to bring this vision to life. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Fatia McCauley again. Thanks so much again for your consideration. Picking up where I was left off earlier, Decro applied to the school district to develop these three sites, which is well within the range of the projects that are managed by our development team. These three projects will be managed by Armin, who you've met today, as well as one of our project managers, and it's well within our range of the workload that we have for our development team, and they'll be supported by myself as well as our CEO. I would like to add specifically for this project that our team does include past childcare facility experience as well as the potential for new markets, which is also within our development team experience. And we appreciate your consideration of our proposal. Thank you.
John Atherton? Followed by Eric Schreiner?
Sorry, John Atherton. I should have noted, I should have said earlier that I am with Bernard's. I'm with the Decro Corporation and also with AC Martin. So I am one of the proposers on three of the ones tonight. I did want to say thank you for the time tonight. Being a San Diego resident and working for San Diego Unified, I know how hard it is for the district staff, whether services are certificated or par educators, how difficult it is for them to be able to come in. Some are even coming across border to be able to teach some of our students here in the San Diego Unified School District. So thank you for our consideration tonight for our proposal, and that's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Eric Schreiner with Monarch Group. I'm going to defer to Sarah Krueger-Jagger. She'll use her own time. Thank you.
Peggy Moss, Kevin Leitner.
My name is Kevin Leitner. I'm Senior Vice President of Housing at Community Housing Works, a public benefit nonprofit, and the project lead. The CHW team is the best partner in supporting the district in achieving its goals to provide affordable workforce housing in Linda Vista to its employees and their families. We proposed the highest number of units at plus 30% more housing than the recommended group, and the highest revenues paid to the district. We've successfully developed and operate two thriving communities in Linda Vista. Unfortunately, that is not accurately reflected in today's agenda report. We provided you earlier today with a letter that outlines inaccuracies and oversights that we found in the report. We're confident that, given the opportunity to present in January, we can answer any questions that you may have to demonstrate why we are the best partner for the district and should be selected to develop the Linda Vista site. Thank you for the opportunity and for trying to address the housing crisis in San Diego.
Good evening. My name is Penny Moss with Property Works LLC, and I'm a strategic consultant on the Community Housing Works team. Thank you for reiterating your goals earlier, and one of them is about community engagement. With years of experience myself, when I was in the public sector, leading public-private partnerships of this magnitude, I understand how important it is to build early consensus with stakeholders, the community, and how proposals that conform with the community plan can streamline a successful delivery. When the community plan and stakeholders are an afterthought, that causes problems. And when that causes problems, that causes delays of time and money, not just to the development team, but also to the public partner, and in this case, the district. Our proposal conforms with the Linda Vista community plan, and we proactively engaged in early stakeholder outreach, not just saying we will do stakeholder outreach if we're selected. We sought the feedback from the community, we incorporated it, and that's why there were letters of support for our team and our proposal. Thank you for the opportunity to come back to you in January.
Tony Manalatos, Matt Winter.
Tony Manalatos with Manalatos Public Affairs. I have a twin boys who are at Lewis Middle School, and our daughter is a Patrick Henry graduate, big supporters of San Diego Unified. I am a strategic consultant with the Community Housing Works team. I have worked in the land use and public sector arena for nearly two decades, so I'm very familiar with our region's housing crisis. And I can't thank you all enough for leaning in to solve that problem. It's a big and bold move, which is why it's so important that we get it right. I know firsthand how important picking the right partner is for these complex public-private projects, and I can't stress this point enough. The Community Housing Works team provides this board and this district with the highest reward and least amount of risk. The highest reward and the least amount of risk. CHW carefully curated a local team with experience in delivering public-private projects to provide a variety of affordable housing options that meet the employee housing survey. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you all.
Hello, my name is Matt Winter. I'm the Director of Housing for LPA, the architecture firm, working with the Community Housing Works team. And since he did, I'm going to mention my daughter goes to Mission Bay High School as a freshman, so. Our approach to Linda Vista was to design a community that reflects both the district's goals and Linda Vista community plan. With the site atop Teckalite Canyon, we respect the canyon edge, maintain required setbacks, and shape the building massing to fit comfortably within the surrounding neighborhood, and also included a standalone daycare center. These choices directly address environmental sensitivity, create views to open space, and mitigate for increased fire risk, and respect the character of the community, based on feedback we heard from Linda Vista community members. We also developed the unit mix and open space program using the district's employee housing survey to support employees with families of varying sizes. This is a district that can move efficiently in approvals, minimizing delays and uncertainty for the district. We welcome the opportunity to present this design and interview at a future date. Thank you.
Darren Kritschlo, and John Allen.
Good evening. I'm with Community Housing Works. Our proposal for Linda Vista was designed to meet the district's goals: affordable workforce housing for employees and a stable long-term revenue stream. We based our approach on employee housing, housing survey and the community plan to make sure that the project is both financially feasible and the project we can deliver. Some elements of this proposal are not fully reflected in the agenda, including our revenue structure and affordability mix, although they were reflected in LASSAR memo. We have decades of experience securing financing, and the financing behind any proposal is critical, especially when funding is scarce. That is why we do not rely on local affordable housing funding sources, which are extremely limited and difficult to secure. If the financing doesn't come together, the homes don't get built, so it's incredibly important to ensure that the capital stacks proposed in every proposal are achievable. The LASSAR memo recommended interviewing the top-ranked teams. We respectfully ask that the board take that step so we can fully evaluate, and thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Allen. I'm with Streamline Development Group. We are the middle-income housing partner on the CHW team. We're happy that you retained an expert at LASSAR to guide your team in evaluating the complex proposals before you, to support the staff, and provide third-party evaluations. The LASSAR memo rated the CHW proposal a 98 out of 100 score, the highest of all 15 proposals before you. They also recommended interviewing the top-ranked teams before advancing the recommended selection, and because that step has not yet occurred, as a result, the committee mistakenly overlooked and misrepresented some of the financial and programmatic components of our proposal, which would have been clarified through the interview process. We welcome that additional level of review, which will give you all the confidence needed to select the partner who brings the highest reward and the least amount of risk for the district and the communities you serve. So it's smart to give yourselves the benefit of hearing from the strongest teams directly, ensuring that all that information is accurate and available. This decision is too important for the board, and so to get it wrong. So we support the decision to come back and see you in January. Thank you.
And I believe this may be a duplicate name, Penny Moss.
I think that's for 10, I remember.
Okay, thank you. That concludes comment on this item.
All right. Thank you so much. We will now bring it back to the dais. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments on this item? Trustee Hazen.
Yes, I think as I reviewed this item and the proposed number of units, and I appreciate President Peterson, you reiterating that the top priority of this board, as identified in our guiding principles, is maximizing the number of affordable units, followed by securing ongoing revenue sources to supplement the district's budget. And as I look at what's recommended here, 222 units versus 294 in the second top-scoring proposal, it's confounding to me because the top-scoring bidder does not provide the maximum number of affordable units, and that's really important to me, and I believe important to the board because we identified that as our highest priority. Hearing that the committee appreciated the childcare center is great to hear. I think we all would like more childcare. We know there's a childcare crisis. I'm an early childhood education advocate, and the top priority that we identified for all of our projects is the maximum number of affordable units, and it looked like that may have been missed in this recommendation.
Thank you, trustee Hazen. Do any of my remaining colleagues have any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, I will, I will defer my comments on, oh, yes.
As far as process, there were four proposals for this site. I'm just trying to think about January. You can see the scoring within the item. Would you like all four proposals to come back, or is there a line, line you'd like to draw, or anything that way?
The motion as it stands is bring them all four back.
Okay, thank you.
And unless somebody wants to make another motion to alter that motion, that's how we'll proceed. Does anybody want to make?
Not specific to this proposal, but in the motion, I know the recommendation is to bring all of them back. I believe there is one proposer for some of these, whose financing is impossible and depends on revenue from the, for the new Affordable Housing Finance Authority, who has no revenue. So I would ask that we remove them from the future.
Okay, so I am, I am now.
But I defer to the motion maker.
I mean, it'll be a new motion. Did you want to make a new motion?
I think clarifying my motion that a staff believes that there's a proposal. I think I clarified in my motion that a staff believes there is a proposal in any of these projects that's not viable, that that would not come back, and so, yeah.
Thank you, Vice President Barrera. The proposal, the proposals that rely on the Regional Housing Finance Authority, while are compelling, and we thank the proposers for their work, the, the revenue stream, it was really difficult for the committee, and you saw LASSAR kind of was trying to grapple with that issue as well in their memo. It really was difficult to grab, you know, to, to grasp because it relies on potential future revenue that would need to be approved by voters. It's, it's years off, so staff did not really consider those to be viable proposals, and I would, I would recommend that the board not, not spend the time because there is so little, there's a lot less certainty around the financing proposed under that scenario. So I'll, that's our staff's thoughts on this.
So just to be clear, I believe you are expressing the consensus of staff that the Michaels Group proposals are not financially viable and therefore will be excluded from the January meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Let the record so show. Okay. Does anybody have any additional comments on item H9? Seeing none, we will move to item H10. It's not selection, and it's not, so this is just consideration of the proposals for 2375 Congress Street, and that is currently, that currently houses the Harold J. Ballard Center site. So, Mr. Dolgoff, once again, would you like to present this item?
Okay. Okay, so for the Ballard Center on Congress Street, we've received proposals from Bridge Housing Corporation, Community Housing Works, the Michaels Corporation, which we talked about earlier, and Monarch, the Monarch Group. The evaluation committee recommended Bridge Housing Corporation with proposal, their proposal to build 141 affordable units, and constructing improvements within the existing Harold J. Ballard Parent Center to provide 6,500-square-foot facility for district's exclusive use, and the balance of the center would become a 9,000-square-foot childcare There were other compelling proposals as well, except for, I would say, the Michaels proposal that doesn't, is almost, you know, sort of unresponsive, if you ask me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dolgoff. With that, we will move to public comment on H10.
Yes, we have seven speakers on H10. Mary Jane Jagazinski, followed by Eric Schreiner.
I'm Mary Jane Jagazinski. I'm Senior Vice President of Development for Bridge, located here in San Diego. As you know, we're a 42-year-old nonprofit. We have five offices across the Pacific coast, including here in San Diego, where we have almost 2,000 units. Our total portfolio is about 16,000, and we were just named the Development Company of the Year by Multi-Family Housing last week, so we're very proud of that. But aside from all that, what, what matters here is we, since 1983, we, we build homes. That's important. That's where you're at as well. We read that your requirements very carefully, and we feel like we've really addressed what you asked in terms of shared uses, as well as affordable homes, as well as considering community benefits, such as a place for the farmer's market, not stuffing more apartments in than the neighborhood can accommodate. So thank you. Look forward to January. Appreciate your time.
Eric Schreiner, no comments at this time. Thank you.
Peggy Moss, and Kevin Leitner.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. Kevin Leitner, Senior Vice President of Housing at Community Housing Works and Lead of the CHW team. Again, we commend you for your efforts to move forward producing housing on district land. Once again, our proposal for this site proposed significantly more housing. I'm not sure we were stuffing it in, but 346 units on this site that would serve a wide range of AMI, area meeting incomes, and ensuring long-term financial benefit to the district, as well as delivering a project that fits the surrounding community. We carefully, carefully crafted our proposal with the district's employee housing survey, and the Old Town Community Plan as our North Star. The LASSAR memo recognized this by awarding us the highest score among all the proposals, and recommended that the top-ranked teams be interviewed, which we fully support and appreciate, and look forward to coming back to see you all in January. We respectfully support your approach and your efforts. Thank you.
Hello again. I'm Penny Moss with the Community Housing Works team, and I was talking about community importance before. I'm going to talk about that again. We aligned our approach with the adopted community plan, keeping building heights appropriate along key frontages, reinforcing the historic transitions that make the neighborhood unique, and we were the only team to incorporate the planned city roundabout at San Diego Avenue and Empudia Street, which is really important to this site because it will impact how it's developed. We began early conversations with community and tribal leaders to understand and incorporate their feedback as well, and again, that reduces risk for the district in the future. The approach that this team took and the time we invested in the community was designed to reduce our collective risk upfront. We appreciate that you are punting this to January to get some more information, and we appreciate the opportunity to dive in a little bit deeper with you then. Thank you.
Tony Manalatos, and Matt Winter.
Tony Manalatos, Strategic Consultant on the Community Housing Works team. I've worked in and around public agencies for many years, and I understand how important it is to select a partner who can deliver predictability transparently and with minimal risks to the district. For this site, CHW intentionally assembled a team with deep local experience in public-private partnerships, community-sensitive design, and complex site conditions. Streamline brings expertise in middle-income housing and financial structuring. Highland brings proven public sector delivery. LPA brings decades of experience designing schools and civic projects across our region, and our outreach and land use partners were selected for their understanding of the San Diego communities and public processes. I can't thank you enough for leaning in to this housing crisis. Board member Peterson perhaps said it best tonight, you know, there's been a lot of talk over the years, but very little moving the needle, and you all are moving the needle in a big, bold way, and I thank you for that.
Hello again. Matt Winter, architect with LPA. I just wanted to note another piece of my expertise is I, I know a lot about historic neighborhoods and historic properties. I spent nine years on the City of San Diego Historic Resource Board. I came off it last year, early in the year. You know, Old Town's a special place in San Diego with deep historic roots, dating back to Kumai. Our design goal is to balance workforce housing protection while respecting that history and creating opportunities for community activation. You know, we respecting that history and creating opportunities for community activation. You know, we intentionally stepped down massing and introduced architectural elements consistent with Old Town character and built from the district's own survey data, shaped unit size and mix. Additionally, we aimed at to keep our project to three stories at most street edges, with the exception of the small area by the hotel side, which is a little taller and a little lower in grade. We respected the Kumai mural, which is the inspiration for creating Arista Way, a contemplated connection in the community plan. This will be a place where the residents can relax, students can learn about the Kumai, neighbors can easily pass through the site. When we presented this concept to Kumai, their feedback is overwhelmingly positive, as was the feedback of local leaders. Thank you.
Darren Critchlow and John Allen.
Good evening. I'm Darren Critchlow with Community Housing Works. Our proposal for Old Town was shaped directly by the RFP and the District Employee Housing Survey. We proposed a broad range of affordable workforce homes and a long-term revenue structure that aligns with the district's stated goals. The agenda characterizes parts of our proposal in ways that don't accurately reflect the RFP or the definitions provided during the process, particularly around affordability and the long-term revenue. We were not contacted to clarify these items, and those details matter because financing determines whether these homes can actually be delivered. For that reason, we respectfully ask that the district follow the recommendation in the LASSAR memo and interview the top-ranked teams. Thank you.
Hello again. My name is John Allen with Streamline Development Group, the middle-income housing partner with the CHW team. Our team received the highest score of all proposals for all sites. Not only did we not receive that interview, the recommended interview, the agenda report ranked our team significantly lower due to many of the items detailed in the opposition letter sent this morning. Until the district has fully evaluated these errors and omissions, we feel the board would not have the adequate information to make this what would be a milestone decision. And so in that effort to deliver the much-needed housing that your employees and their families need, we agree that the safest path for the district is to conduct those interviews before selecting a partner to ensure you may select the team that really does best meet your goals and your vision. We really appreciate the board's leadership, and we're really ready to participate in that process. Thank you very much.
That concludes comment.
Right. Yes.
I said, I, sorry, because of the nature of the way this is played out, I wasn't prepared for this particular thing. But there was one of the proposals, and they did speak tonight, but the Monarch Group, there was a question that the committee had about their district use. And so I think, from a staff perspective, I'd recommend that we interview them. But we would, I would, and it's written in here, I think that it would give them the opportunity to explain the community use. They specified that a community, or I'm sorry, district use, because they specified a community garden as a district use. And that is something that would not, in our opinion, constitute joint occupancy. So, you know, if the board so pleases, the board, I mean, the staff would suggest that if you're going to interview all of them, you interview them too. But would ask that the board, or recommend the board clarify that particular question that's come up or that came up in our analysis.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee. Are there any additional public comment? No. Seeing none, we'll move to board discussion. Does the board have any comments or questions in relation to this item?
I guess just simply to reiterate what I shared previously around the prioritization of maximum number of affordable units. And my hope is that in January, we can get more clarity around the differences in these proposals in terms of that specific priority identified by the board.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Hazen. I, again, will defer...
Simply add, and reiterating, and again, it's in the guiding principles, that affordability as defined by this board is no more than 30% of an employee's income. So that's the definition of affordability we're talking about.
Thank you, Trustee Hazen. Seeing no further discussion, we will move to the next item, which we will skip item 11 because we voted on it. We won't skip it. We already handled it. And we will move to item H12, which pertains to the joint occupancy agreement that was offered in request for proposal at 2101 Commercial Street. And that was formerly the Irving Street Warehouse site. With that, we will move to Dolgoff again. It's you. Hello, welcome.
Okay. On the, thank you. On the, for the Commercial Street property, we received proposals from Decro and Mirka. The evaluation committee recommended the Decro proposal with 87 affordable units and a 4,800 square foot childcare facility, along with a 2,100 square foot secure outdoor play area for district use. Their proposal is much more complete than the Mirka proposal. And there were some sort of missing components to that. That concludes staff's comment on this one.
Thank you, Lee. With that, we will move to public comment. Marty Stoltz, please announce the speakers.
Yes, we have three speakers. Armin Neshat, Fathia McCauley, and John Atherton.
Good evening again. My name is Armin Neshat. Our team includes extensive public sector lending and legal expertise in delivering affordable housing. We're excited to leverage this expertise both for the Commercial Street project, as well as all the projects that we were recommended for tonight. Our plan for Commercial Street delivers 87 affordable homes for households at 30% to 80% AMI. And again, includes one, two, and three-bedroom units that are shaped by district staff input and the employee housing needs assessment. The central feature is our onsite childcare center to provide reliable care for working parents in the broader neighborhood. The design integrates seamlessly with the streetscape and supports a walkable environment. And again, we've partnered with the San Diego County Building and Construction Trades Council on an MOU to execute a project labor agreement to ensure high-quality construction and workforce protections for this project. We look forward to partnering both the district as well as the community to bring this vision to life. Thank you.
Hello again. I'm Fathia McCauley again with Decro Corporation. One thing that we do want to make sure that we emphasize is the expertise of our development team to complete projects such as this nature, especially ones that are mixed use. In particular, the childcare facility and the secure outdoor play area were direct reflections to the member survey that was conducted. So we really took care to actually find, provide something that was reflective. Also, I think in terms of workforce needs, as we know in Southern California, you can still be employed and not able to support rent that is market rate. And that is one of our focus areas. We deliberately looked at AMI levels that were not over 80% to be reflective of those that really do not have the ability to pay market rate rent. And lastly, I would say that in terms of this particular project, we're especially proud of our collaboration with our architect and the GC. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm sure everyone's just as tired as I am if you're in the public comment period tonight. Anyhow, John Atherton again with Bernard's. I have been a GC working with San Diego Unified for probably 25 years. We bring the expertise on the education side for mixed use. We've done a lot of, I've personally done a lot of joint use projects with San Diego Unified over the years. That's why I've gotten involved with this and being able to be a partner with San Diego Unified. They talked a lot about the affordable housing portion of it. Bernard's also has the multifamily facet to our building group also. So we're marrying our education group and our multifamily group with this partnership. And we hopeful, we look forward to coming back in January and having further discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Great. With that, we will move back to the board. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Vice President Barrera.
Thank you, President Peterson. So I appreciate you clarifying one of the issues that the board should be asking one of the proposers around on the previous item on the Ballard Center. On this one, my understanding is that the other proposer, while proposing a significantly larger number of units, had gaps in the application. Could you give us a little bit of what we might be asking that developer to clarify?
So there were, the one thing, I think, I think one of the sort of fatal flaw was that they proposed a private childcare, a private for-profit childcare operator to operate the childcare facility, and it has to be a district use. So it doesn't really qualify under joint occupancy. That's one sort of big fatal flaw. The proposal itself was missing some pieces. I mean, it was kind of, there were elements that were not, there were elements that were, of the questions in the RFP that were not responded to. So I would say completing that and sort of clarifying, I was going to bring this up, but clarifying the district use, which didn't seem to allow them to qualify, but because they were sort of ranked lower, you're absolutely right. They did offer, I would say the other piece is they offered, you know, a lot of rent, but not specifying how that rent would, you know, I mean, if you're looking at the revenue piece, there wasn't enough specificity on the revenue as well. So I mean, those are the areas, I think, that would help if Mirka, which was the other proposer, if they could clarify that too, if you want to bring them back. I mean, obviously, we are bringing them back. That, they'll need to clarify the district use for sure in order to, for us to satisfy joint occupancy.
Trustee Warespan.
Is this the old site that used to be Alba at one time, or Cook, Marcy Cook, or something over there?
This is our, was the former warehouse and maintenance facility on Commercial Street. A large portion of that has already been redeveloped. This is sort of the last piece. There's a building that was attached to the warehouse where I think instructional and other materials were stored, along with other, but it was, it was part of, I've seen some old photos. It was actually quite a place, you know. It was like basically the hub of the ops, you know, of physical plant operations before Kearney Mesa was built. And so that's the site we're talking about. And this is just one portion of it. It's not a very large piece of property, but there is a multi-story building on the property now that's vacant. And so that's...
Where's that, where's the other school? I mean, the Alba, the old Alba.
The old Alba. I'm not, okay, there was an Alba, so Alba was at, was located adjacent to, you're talking about when it was, it was adjacent to Mann Middle School at one time, part of it.
No, I'm talking about when Willie Horton went.
Way back.
Y O U. That was the school.
Oh, Y O U. Okay.
Yeah, that was a facility.
That property is not too far away. It's, it's been, is now the site of where King Chavez has one of their schools. It's a triangular piece of property. And it's not, it's a few blocks away from Logan Memorial Education Campus. Yeah. I don't, I don't have the address for you, but the youth opportunities.
It's trivia night.
Right? Or something like that. Going way back.
Any additional comment from the board on this item? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, we will move to our final housing item, which is to return it back to item H8, which is a consideration of the joint occupancy agreement for which an RFP was issued back in April for 4,100 Normal Street, which is currently Eugene Bruker Education Center. Lee, would you like to introduce this item as well?
Okay. So on 4,100 Normal Street property, we received proposals from Affirmed Housing Group, Protea, Malik Infill Development, the Monarch Group, and the Michaels Corporation, which we talked about earlier. The evaluation committee recommended Affirmed Housing Group's proposal to construct 943 affordable housing units to include a public plaza, a dog park, retention and rehabilitation of historic buildings, preservation of heritage trees, a community garden, and onsite childcare facilities. I will tell you that the other proposals were also, you know, compelling and much different. So they had, so it's going to be an interesting conversation around that one because they're divergent, the proposals are very divergent among the three, you know. And happy to take questions.
Well, before you do that, why don't we, why don't we go to public comment? Do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we have a lot of public comment on H8. So we'll call names in order. I'll call up groups of four. Andrew Sharp, Gaff Gaffin, Andrew Malik, Kristen Harms.
Good evening, board members. I'm pleased to be with you tonight. It's very, I would say, it's just very on-brand for the board to decide that we need to challenge ourselves and do better and come back in January. So we certainly appreciate the chance to come back and provide a little bit more detail. I'm here representing the Protea Malik proposal, the Keystone Education District. I think, as most of you know, my son graduated from San Diego High, received a great education there, thanks to your commitments and thanks to our educators. And this is really an opportunity for us to give our educators a world-class environment to live in. We are proposing parks. We are proposing a pool and a lot of other amenities. And I just want to say in terms of the pool, one of the things that's important to us is we want to be an enrollment magnet. I know how important that is to the district. The pool we had proposed would be the home pool for the San Diego High cavers. Would give them the same competitive opportunity that La Jolla and other schools have. So we think that's both an equity issue as well as an enrollment issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Yuhudi Gaffin. Most people know me as Gaff. I'm here with my partners, Jeff Essakow and Andrew Malik. I've worked side by side with this district since 1998. It's amazing how time has flown, Prop MM. I've seen firsthand how public schools rarely get the funding and the support that they need. This deep proposal and understanding has driven everything we've done. And we are proposing to bring $4.2 billion to your district through our long-term lease. But I must say, for me, this is more than just a project. It's a career capstone to honor my late son, Josh, who led our work at San Diego Unified School District for many, many years. And we're proposing to turn Annex One into a career learning center that will be funded through the foundation that I formed in its name. My promise to you is to make this a win-win, a win for the district, a win for the city, and a legacy we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Malik, partners with Gaff and Jeffrey Essakow. My focus, my entire career, has been building housing for the missing middle, creating policy and projects that work for the workforce. Our proposal, the Keystone Education District, is designed to be a regional resource for the district. We are offering an urban lifestyle that makes the most climate-friendly, makes it the most climate-friendly project on the list. The numbers tell the story. Our project houses the most people and the most families. We are delivering 1,100 missing middle homes without competing for scarce low-income housing subsidies. We aren't just looking at unit counts. We are looking at dignity. We want to build a neighborhood that treats your education workforce with respect, benefits the surrounding community, and honors the deep history of this site. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kristen Harms with the University Heights Historical Society. The Bruker site is not just another housing site. It has local and regional significance as the location of the former Normal School, which was built in 1898 and later moved to Montezuma Mesa, where it became San Diego State University. It is also home to the extant Teachers Training Annex, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Therefore, massing and scaling on this site is extremely important, massing and scaling around Annex One. So, whichever proposal this board decides to accept, we ask that the following be included in the term sheet: scale and massing the buildings to protect the historic integrity of Annex One, incorporating the architectural styles of the apartments along the adjacent campus avenue, adding a preservation architect to the project, and closely collaborating with a representative from the historical society to ensure that Secretary of Interior standards are fulfilled. Thank you.
Bruce Coons, excuse me, Bruce Coons, William Eleg, Mark Johnson.
Thank you very much. Bruce Coons, Deputy Director, Saver Heritage Organization. Since we have a little time, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for treating Annex One and Two and the Oak Tree well, and your RFP that you sent out. Just wanted to reiterate that the ground plan that was provided by the district was a pretty fantastic ground plan. It's an opportunity to have a very significant public amenity and housing, an opportunity that we don't see very often anywhere in town. And so, we just wanted to make sure that whatever project is proposed would look more at that ground plan that the district provided, because the public open spaces there were extremely significant, and they provide breathing room for the historic buildings. The one image I saw recently from one of the proposals, the building needs to step back a little and not overwhelm the historic building. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Eleg. I'm a University Heights community member, planning group member, and there are concerns that I have with both the Affirmed and the other projects as well. Scale and mass of the buildings need to be balanced between the public open space that we did not see in a lot of these proposals. We're asking that the building height along Normal Street be approximately 70 feet, then transition down to more of the center, the north side, and in addition to that, the campus side as well. We did not see much pedestrian circulation on these projects, north to south, east to west. Very critical for both the neighborhood and for the people involved. Public access by outside vehicles, you know, that hasn't been well-defined. We don't want to have a public road through the property. And then finally, we ask that the, that there be collaboration between whoever the proposer is and the Coalition Community of University Heights, so that we can help them meet the goals of, of this project. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Mark Johnson, co-chair of the Community Coalition of University Heights, and I'm also a member of the selection committee, helping inform staff on these recommendations. So, a lot of hours spent on the, on these recommendations. It was an honor to be able to serve in that role. For Normal Street, the Affirmed proposal scored highest of all the number of proposals that came in. It's not a perfect plan, and there's a lot of room for improvement on all of the proposals that you've got before you. What is built here can't overburden the University Heights community, especially when compared to what other neighborhoods are being burdened with. We have to address the existing infrastructure, and we have to find a solution that has the scale and size and mass that's compatible with this site and compatible with the neighborhood. That being said, of all the proposals that are before you, the mix of units has been way off from what your district employees need for two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms, as well as what Rena says we have to have. So, we're looking at the most affordable units, especially the missing middle, two- and three-bedroom units. And that's one of the reasons why we like the Affirmed units, the Affirmed proposal so much, it had the most number of those units, but there's a lot of room for improvement. Make no mistake, our community welcomes this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to truly make a meaningful, positive impact on the affordable housing crisis, and we applaud you for your efforts in leading on this. We look forward to talking more next month and working with you.
Dawn Martin, Manny Rodriguez, Leif Genzert, and Kate Gasparo.
Good afternoon, President Peterson and honorable trustees. My name is Manny Rodriguez, and I'm the president of the YIMBY Democrats of San Diego County. The cost of housing is crushing working families. That's the truth, and I appreciate President Peterson making a point of that earlier. The solution to this is building more housing, especially housing reserved for our workforce, which needs it the most. Cities that have built a lot of housing have seen their rents stabilize and even drop, such as Austin and Minneapolis. You'll hear from, you'll hear concerns from million-dollar single-family homeowners about how, you know, it doesn't, these proposals might not fit people's aesthetic preferences. Well, on behalf of the YIMBY Democrats of San Diego County and our hundreds of supporters, we ask that you prioritize the needs of working families over the aesthetic preferences of the affluent. Please do. And you can do that by selecting the proposal that will build the most homes for working people on this site, the proposal with 1,500 homes. Thank you very much.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Leif Genzert. I'm the vice president of RITSD, a local public transport advocacy group, and I live in North Park, just over the Wall of Texas Street, so I come here very often, I'm very familiar with the area. We love high transit ridership. We have one of the highest bus routes in, in the county with the 215 and the 7 very close by. We advocate for the Keystone Project to have the highest number of residences. And we heard already about overburdening infrastructure, so we want to make sure that public transport is infrastructure. We want to have as much people as possible on public transport, because otherwise, they live somewhere else and they drive much more. So, if we're serious about VMT decrease, we need to focus on dense residency and public transport nearby. Thank you.
Aria Grossman, Margaret Mann, Mary Brown, and Ike Warner.
Good evening. My name is Aria Grossman. I'm the policy manager at Circulate San Diego. Circulate is a policy and planning organization that advocates for vibrant communities through policies that encourage more homes, affordable end-market rate, and transit-oriented development. I'm here today to encourage you to fully take advantage of this unique site and select the proposal that maximizes the number of homes constructed here. This opportunity presents a significant opportunity for San Diego Unified to address the housing crisis in a way that directly supports its staff. Your goal here should be to support as many employees as possible. The current recommended proposal builds over 500 fewer homes than allowable, and by choosing to move forward with this proposal, you are making a choice to leave 500 district employees and their families with more expensive and less connected housing options. This project is about more than just this neighborhood. This is a high resource and very well-connected area, and as such, it is a real opportunity to fully transform the broader region. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Ike Warner. I'm a community advocate and a member of the Uptown Community Planning Group, speaking tonight in a personal capacity in opposition to the staff recommendation. The district has said it wants to make a serious dent in the housing crisis and provide homes for a meaningful share of its workforce, but the staff-recommended plan delivers fewer homes, less public space, and dramatically less long-term revenue, antithetical to your goals. It also leaves many teachers behind because a narrow affordability band means most won't qualify. I hope in January we'll strongly consider the Protea Malik proposal. It maximizes housing units, the single most effective way to ensure more educators and staff can benefit, and your top priority. It provides more mixed-use space community-serving design and a stronger financial return over the life of the ground lease, revenue that you can reinvest in students and schools. The staff-recommended proposal, while well-intentioned, is inconsistent with the Uptown Community Plan proposing only a quarter of the allowable density and relies heavily on LITAC credits, which are scarce and should be reserved for sites where they are truly necessary. If San Diego Unified is going to do workforce housing, it should do so boldly by delivering the plan that delivers the most homes, the most benefits, and the greatest long-term value. Thank you.
Barry Hager, Robert Josoi, Melody Locke, Jonathan Taylor.
My name is Melody Locke, vice president of development at Affirmed Housing. We appreciate staff's and the evaluation committee's recommendation of our proposal and the time spent to review each proposal. Affirmed Housing has been developing affordable housing for more than 30 years. We are headquartered here in San Diego and work throughout California. For this effort, Affirmed is partnering with the Pacific Companies. Together, our organizations have completed approximately 400 developments and delivered more than 30,000 apartment homes. We also have experience with project labor agreement. Our general contractor is currently working on two PLA deals. Our proposal included modular construction. We remain flexible and open to considering construction types and materials to best meet the needs of the district, residents, and community. This year, Affirmed has closed financing on approximately 750 affordable homes, and for the next year, we have secured tax credits for more than 1,000 additional homes. Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Taylor, and I'm the senior vice president of asset management for Affirmed Housing Group. Affirmed has partnered on several ground lease developments across San Diego and throughout California. With MTS, we have completed Shoreline in Grantville and are nearing completion of Skyline in Rancho Bernardo. Our project at the Spring Street Transit Station received its tax credit award just this morning and is scheduled to begin construction next year. In the pipeline, we have an additional project under development with MTS in the South Bay. Altogether, our partnership has produced 470 apartment homes under a ground lease arrangement with MTS. At Affirmed, we invest time and resources upfront to ensure the long-term quality and durability of our affordable housing communities. We select high-quality construction materials, install energy-efficient systems, such as solar panels and solar hot water heating. We design our buildings to maximize natural light. We also prioritize green spaces to enhance the well-being of our residents and our neighbors. Thank you.
Jeff, excuse me, Jeff Edgren, Gerard Garabedian, Sable Beltran, and Sarah Isker.
Good evening, and it is evening. It is evening. My name is Jeff Edgren. I'm director of acquisitions at Affirmed Housing. We've been really excited about our proposal, and we wanted to share more with the board, but we waited until this public hearing. We've been very careful not to speak to any board members about our project because we wanted to be sensitive to the communication requirements within the RFP. We look forward to the opportunity to present to the board outside of this meeting in January to provide additional information. I also want to highlight the strength and credibility of evaluations we have received. Affirmed was ranked as the number-one proposal by Kaiser Marston for this site. Kaiser Marston is one of the most respected financial advisory firms in the state. LaSar Development Consultants, widely recognized as a leading expert in community development, also ranked Affirmed as the number-one proposal. Additionally, Affirmed scored approximately 10 points higher than the competing projects. Thank you, and we look forward to demonstrating the quality and competitiveness of our submission.
My name is Gerard Garabedian. I'm senior architect, senior associate at Dahlin Group. Dahlin is the architect for the Affirmed housing proposal. I personally attended the community meeting at Burney Elementary School to hear residents' feedback firsthand, and I've walked the site and both annex buildings, working collaboratively with the Affirmed Housing and their partner. We incorporated the features that the community requested while still meeting the district's housing goals. Our proposal of 952 affordable housing homes has been thoughtfully shaped to fit within the existing community. Along campus avenue, the building stepped down to four stories, three and four stories, to respect the neighborhood scale, while on Normal Street, they rise to five stories. We are also proposing a phased approach to development, allowing each phase to lease up in smaller, more manageable stages. Our plan retains both Annex One and Two and preserves the heritage oak and ficus trees. The team is confident both in the timeline and phasing of our strategy. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sable Beltran, project manager at Affirmed Housing. Our proposal is the only one that offers 100% affordable homes. We are proposing that all units serve households between 30% and 100% of the area of median income. To provide context, in San Diego, an affordable three-bedroom home at 100% AMI rents for approximately $4,300 per month. Rents for units above 100% AMI and the other proposals would be significantly higher. For example, a three-bedroom unit at 120% AMI would rent for about $5,160. According to the housing survey included in the RFP, rents at the 120% AMI level are not affordable for district staff based on their household incomes. In addition to my role at Affirmed, I'm also a resident of University Heights and personally supportive of the project. Thank you.
Members of the board, my name is Sarah Isker. I represent Cosmott Companies, financial consultant to Protea Malik, known as the Keystone Education District Team. Cosmott has been a leader for close to 40 years to government agencies and private developers, including school districts. We are experts in structuring P3 projects. Cosmott viewed the opportunity to redevelop the district headquarters as not only an affordable housing opportunity, but a way to generate long-term revenue for the district and provide additional community benefits. Affirmed prioritized short-term cash flow. We chose to include the district as a true partner, offering a share of the revenue versus fixed rent. While the fixed rent model offers immediate payment, it shortens the district during the life of the term of the ground lease. Our proposal creates over three times the net present value for the district and is projected to provide $4.242 billion.
Nikki Kometah, Jordan Latchford, Tracy Knight, and Sharon Gale.
Happy to be here. My name is Nikki Kometah. I'm the chief financial officer for Affirmed Housing. I've been with them for over 16 years. Affirmed has secured more than $3.5 billion in total financing, and we bring the 30-plus years of experience applying for and successfully utilizing tax credits to build affordable housing. We maintain strong, transparent, longstanding relationships with our investors, lenders, who specialize in tax credit transactions and understand how to efficiently close these types of deals. Our proposal includes four phases because we are mindful of the project sizes that are most competitive in each tax credit funding cycle. This structure maximizes the likelihood of securing the necessary financing for each phase. Our expertise also is in these complex financing structures with public-private partnering, and we come with a certainty of execution and delivery. Through this approach, we have met both of the district's key goals, maximizing the number of homes and generating reliable, ongoing revenue for the district. Thank you so much.
My name is Sharon Gale, and I'd like to talk about historic preservation. It's not true, as you've been told, that people care about it, that anyone cares, that very, that many people care about. The proof is, last year, we had over 30 million people, tourists or residents, who could have gone to the Marston House. Those people went to the zoo, they went to the beach, but the Marston House that Soho runs, that Bruce Coons runs, was open only two days a week. You're being asked to spend a lot of money on historic properties that are going to lose money. The Marston House loses money for the city, year after year after year. Those are going to be, they're ways, going to be a waste of money. Why don't you just give the buildings away? If somebody wants them, they can take them someplace else and have a museum. But this is going to be a waste of money. Your first priority is housing. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, President Pedersen and Board Trustees. My name's Jordan Latchford, and I live here in University Heights, and I'm here to urge the board to support the project with the highest number of homes. I want to begin by thanking the San Diego Unified and this board for your thoughtful work to address the region's housing crisis. Research shows that adding homes at a mix of income levels is one of the most effective ways to improve overall affordability and reduce pressure on existing rents. And because this site is publicly owned land, including some market-rate homes, is what helps pay for the amenities, improvements, and long-term investments the community has consistently asked for. That's why I want to encourage the board to consider a bold vision for this site. The site's over 13 acres in one of San Diego's most walkable, centrally-located neighborhoods with transit, schools, and local businesses all within steps. Very few places in the city offer this combination, so if we design this thoughtfully with high-quality public spaces and a mix of housing types, this site can become a real asset for both the district and the community. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy Knight, and I serve as the Board Vice President of San Diego Architectural Foundation. The foundation's mission is to promote outstanding design through education and community. Architecture and urban design aren't luxuries, they're essential public goods that affect how people live, interact, and thrive. By prioritizing quality, context-sensitive design instead of cheap, short-term, or auto-centric projects, we invest in a sustainable and resilient future for the city. The city has a rare opportunity to create a walkable, mixed-use urban neighborhood filled with parks, shops, and civic spaces that bring people together. Prioritizing vertical growth over sprawl creates room for more public amenities, stronger infrastructure, and improved skyline. San Diego deserves more than just buildings. It deserves a project that fills and lifts up every resident and strengthens our city, unlike what's been recommended. As we make decisions about developing, zoning, public spaces, affordable housing, and infrastructure, we must demand design excellence to serve everyone. Good architecture and planning is not optional, it's the foundation of a livable and beautiful San Diego. Thank you.
Issie Martinez, Brer Marsh, Denise Carter, and Eric Schrader.
Hi, folks. Issel Martinez, CSEA, San Diego Parent Educator Chapter President for 759, and Parent Educator for Claremont Canyon Academy. As one of the members of the Evaluation Committee, we took great stride to make sure that the guiding principles that the board set forth were, really looked into in every single proposal we read through. There were some moments where some proposals had unclear financials, and we asked staff to help clarify. There were some moments where we were looking at the joint spaces to make sure that it was going to be the best fit, not just for the employees that would be in that housing, but for the community as well. Most, most proposals had several questions that we asked staff to clarify in moments. And so I reiterate that this is a difficult decision to make, but I applaud you for making this necessary movement forward because staff really, really, really need this. Thank you.
Denise Carter with Pacific Companies, and I just want to reiterate what Affirmed has said as a partner of theirs, that, you know, we're committed to building affordable housing here. We own 326 properties with over 27,000 units. We currently have 37 projects under construction in California with about 4,800 units. We have extensive experience developing, building, and owning large projects. We just, a couple of years ago, completed 980 units in Santa Ana in one block. We have over 1,200 units under construction in San Jose right now. We just completed 138 units in San Diego with another 557 that are under construction currently. And we also did about 580 units in the city of Indio. So I believe that we're, you know, we're here to enhance what Affirmed is doing here and bring our experience, and, you know, we always, even in doing these big projects, we look at the neighborhood and we look at the community, and we try to design and build to those.
Hi, Eric Schrader again. We look forward to seeing you again in January. Thank you.
Edgar Ramirez Manriquez, Robert Matlock, Miriam Gaeta, and Marcia Baruda.
Good evening. My name is Edgar Ramirez Manriquez. I am a resident of University Heights and member of the North Park Community Planning Group, and today I am speaking in opposition to the redevelopment proposal by Affirmed. The proposal includes not one, but two above-ground parking garages, totaling nearly 1,000 new parking spaces. University Heights is one of the most walkable, transit-rich neighborhoods in the city, and this isn't new. Early in our neighborhood's history, our historic streetcar network moved middle- and working-class people to their destinations quickly and affordably. Today, our community continues to benefit from that people-focused development. Doubling down on car dependency doesn't make sense, not for our neighborhood's history, not for the children next door who will face more traffic pollution and potential collisions near dangerous intersection, and not in the face of climate change. Let's plan for people, not for cars. Thank you.
Kevin Leichner, Wesley Morgan, Brittany Bailey, and Shaquille Adams.
Good evening, my name, excuse me, good evening, my name is Wesley Morgan. I want to begin by thanking the board, superintendent, and every development team present. Your comments at the beginning of the meeting show real ambition. It is inspiring to hear San Diego described as a model for the nation on educator housing, and I look forward to seeing what comes. The decision to defer these to January is the right one. Thanks for your leadership and for making long-term vision you're making come to life. As you prepare for January, I want to urge you to adopt the most forward-looking plan for this Normal Street site. The proposal that delivers a maximum number, not just percentage, number of affordable homes, the most family-sized units, and the strongest community integration should be the one that moves forward. Height is not a problem. Height is how you unlock parks, plazas, public space, and green corridors. Limiting height only faces more pavement and above-ground parking garages, ingress, egress, parking lots like the current recommended proposal. We need an evaluation process that centers educators and regional needs, not the narrow preferences of a few long-term residents. Thank you very much for your leadership.
Hello, my name is Shaquille Adams. I've been a resident for, I'm a San Diego native for 30 years. I'm in opposition of, I'm in opposition due to the fact that we need the maximum height limit for more teachers to be closer to their workplace, and the more, more, more teachers are at their workplace unless they have to drive, eliminating traffic, which is a major contention in San Diego everywhere. Thank you.
Sarah Crewer, Jared Cadry, Gary Landen, Anthony Deng.
Good evening, Board members, superintendent, and staff. My name is Sarah Crewer. I'm a partner at Monarch Group and here on behalf of our A+ San Diego team, also including Klein Financial, Eden Housing, Legal &amp; General Torres, and numerous trusted community partners led by the Prebuss Foundation, Jewish Family Services, and Alliance San Diego. Our team brings over 150 years of experience in a long-trusted partnership with the district, with nearly 45,000 homes delivered, high-quality homes, including 9,000 here in San Diego over the last 50 years. Our focus, commitment, and heart are entirely here with you, the district, just as it's been at La Via over the past decade, where we now house 53 district employees who live in high-quality, affordable homes. You have highly varied proposals, as you've mentioned, significant risk-reward trade-offs to consider, and we appreciate the opportunity and the willingness to come back at a public workshop in January to discuss this further. Thank you so much for your leadership on this positioning, I think, San Diego Unified statewide to lead and innovate on workforce housing. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Anthony Deng, and I'm a policy advocate at Climate Action Campaign. Our mission is to slash climate pollution and create healthier communities through effective and equitable policy action. We are continuing to watchdog the board's 2023 electrification resolution, committing to building all-electric developments without fossil fuel hookups, and we applaud the board in the soon-to-be all-electric housing developments. We also want the board to select a developer proposal with the most housing units. It's critical we build dense housing in walkable neighborhoods such as this one to reduce vehicle miles traveled and to reduce climate pollution. Additionally, we want to emphasize the speed of delivery in the criteria. The city, county, and state all have 20, 30 greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, and the school district must play its part to reach these. Projects that rely primarily on low-income housing tax credits could take decades to get financed. Our housing and climate crisis are urgent, and a proposal that can be delivered faster should be scored higher. Thank you.
Anisha Agarwal, Kislav Gupta, Josephine Voe, and Tiffany Finstad.
I'm just a resident of San Diego. San Diego is facing a serious housing shortage. We haven't built enough housing to keep up with demand in over 25 years, and with the crisis we are facing, I want to urge the board to opt for the proposal that builds the most homes. While I'm glad the district is committing to build affordable housing for its educators regardless of which plan is chosen, housing more staff near their place of work presents an amazing opportunity, and that's something that shouldn't be wasted. By choosing the plan that results in the most homes, we will be building a brighter future for the city and a step forward in making San Diego a better and more affordable place to live. If the district is serious about tackling the housing crisis for both the city and for its educators, the obvious choice is to choose the plan that maximizes housing and thus maximizes community benefit. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Josie. I'm really excited and grateful to see that our school district is moving to create affordable housing. I'd like to oppose the Affirmed housing proposal for the Brucker site. To me, it's not enough housing. We all know that we're facing a housing crisis in San Diego, and I understand concerns for historical and neighborhood preservation, traffic, and parking. Unfortunately, I find these arguments very harmful in the face of our current crisis. The people who provide the services on which we rely should live here in our neighborhood with us. This is a golden opportunity to safeguard housing for our collective future. San Diego will continue to grow. Any housing we choose not to build is housing that district employees will not have available in the future. Some of these plans accommodate hundreds fewer people and family in our community. We cannot claim to care about affordability, housing, our educators, our children, and our community, and then also decide to pass up the opportunity to build homes for them in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Mike Phillips, Adam Klein, Stephanie Morgan. Okay, we'll go to our virtual speakers. We have several. Josh Clark, if you could please unmute. Josh Clark.
Hello. As the parent of a San Diego Unified student and resident of Uptown, it's thrilling to imagine the Keystone project anchoring our community. This project sets a high standard for our other projects, should improve their sites, communities, and the district. It represents the greatest return on investment for our district, which is routinely mired by deficits that a fierce suppress enrollment. You all do a great job working with constrained budgets, and the Keystone project will make that work easier for your successors. Keystone maximizes the number of public service in the families who will call Uptown home, a century-old streetcar suburb where most of the trips can be done by biking, walking, or transit in a resource-rich area, and I would like many more people to have these opportunities. Keystone's community enhancements will improve the public realm and help turn a harrowing intersection into a safer and more attractive place to travel through. The Brucker site is a node in the rapid transit, regional bike, and community pedestrian networks. Lastly, selfishly, I'm excited to take my family and friends to hang out at Keystone, to use the pool shop and chill in the plaza. This project has all the features of quality urban placemaking in its design. We don't want to spend another 100 years imagining what could have been at this site. We deserve Keystone. Thanks.
Justin Schiffer.
Hi there, my name is Justin Schiffer. I am a teacher in the district and possibly the first teacher so far on this, on this call. I want to commend and thank the district leadership and the board for taking a progressive approach and helping the city address its housing affordability crisis and create a long-term revenue stream for the district. And while the, while the efforts are admirable, I think the district can and should do more to maximize the number of homes on the Ed Center site. 952 might sound like a lot, but I think the numerous state and city incentives, density bonuses, and being in a transit priority area mean that this buildings, these buildings should be built taller and ultimately be more homes for more staff. I think we have a moral obligation to do as much as we can to help solve this housing, housing crisis and provide, again, homes for us teachers. So I ask that the board prioritize the plan with the most number of homes in the January workshop and not the current plan. The scale of the crisis, and especially among teachers like myself, means we can't afford to leave 500 homes on the table. Ultimately, maximizing the number of homes provides the most benefit for the district's staff, the district's finances, and the city's housing stock. Thank you.
Zach, excuse me, Zach Sturgeon.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm calling in to oppose the current recommended project by Affirmed Housing and support the Keystone proposal. This location is along a major transit corridor, and this proposal best takes advantage of this location by improving pedestrian connectivity to major transit hubs and understanding that the proximity to transit presents a great opportunity to prioritize building denser housing over wasting valuable land on excessive parking. This proposal is also a proposal that generates the most long-term revenue for San Diego Unified and is the most sustainable. Thank you.
Sam Borinsky.
Hi, my name is Sam Borinsky, and I'm a student who just graduated from high school in San Diego. I'm speaking in opposition with the Affirmed plan and instead support the Keystone Education District. There will be a lot more homes under the Keystone Education District plan, and it'll be a far more transit-oriented development project, which is crucial in the simultaneous housing crisis and transportation infrastructure that currently exists in the area. So I support a dense solution as the Keystone Education District provides. Thank you.
And Adian Choudary. Yes, you have one minute.
All right, I'm, good, good evening. I am Adion, and I'm a resident of San Diego, and I would like to oppose the current recommended proposal and support the Keystone development, which would provide, which would provide over 500 more units than the, than the current recommended proposal. More, more housing, we just need more housing of every type and closer to where teachers work, closer to where people want to live. This, this place is a very fugal location near transit and a vibrant, walkable neighborhood. The Keystone proposal will provide great amenities to the neighborhood, it will attract investment, it will, it would, it would encourage more walking and transit, which is what we need. And I would like the board to consider the long-term benefits of the Keystone proposal to the district's finances. Right now, the district is facing financial troubles, and while short-term gain might be attractive, I think the long-term outlook, over $4 billion more revenue than the current recommended proposal, should be.
Thank you. That concludes public comment on H8.
All right, thank you so much. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Lee, would you like to?
I'd like just one, just want to remind, on this one, the Michaels was a proposer, so just want to, and then I think, I'll try to do Marty a favor here, the, the format for this. this, I know Richard proposed the amendment, or the amendment and the motion, but I think to clarify, to help staff organize the special meeting, I would, so I hear interview, how many minutes, question and answer, you know, how much time, and will there be other materials requested? I'm just trying to kind of make sure for, it's for all of you and for us, you know, I think it would be better to clarify that now, provide some sort of parameters and call it rules of the game, so that we can better facilitate that dialogue, so we can get more clarity, if that's what I'm hearing the Board is seeking. So that's just a suggestion, obviously, I'm just. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted, just asking.
I will, since we're nearing the end here, are there any additional comments on item eight before we, and then we'll wrap it up with that discussion. Vice President Barrera.
Yeah, thank you, President Pedersen. Thank you so much, again, for everybody who's taken such an active interest in this and to the different development teams. As we talked about at the very beginning, these proposals for this site are dramatically different from each other in concept and what they accomplish. And so I think it's important to once again hear, you know, from each of us what we're emphasizing. And we've been clear in our stated goals and what we put in the RFP that we're wanting to maximize affordable housing for our employees. We also should be clear that our goal this entire time has been an equal mix of housing that is affordable to our classified employees and to our certificated employees. So we are looking, you know, for proposals that provide that mix, and we understand that the combined, you know, proposals are important in providing that mix, but for this site, we want to see that balance. We should also be clear that we want housing that's affordable to our employees who have families and who are also parents in the district, and we're going to be, and we're going to be looking for that as well. And want to be really, really clear about affordability, and we talk about, you know, 30% of income, and that's important. It's also important that what we're providing is something significantly more affordable than what our employees can just go out across the street at the Winslow and rent. So you gotta, you know, I think somebody said, we're going to be pushing you when you come and make these presentations. Consider this a push. We want to see real benefit to our employees, and we want to see that mix, and we want to see units that are available to our families, and we want to see you work with the community to make sure that the design of these projects are something that the community can really get behind and champion and feel proud of. So consider that my push when you come back to us in January. Get as close to these board goals, and if it wasn't clear before that we're looking for this mix of units that are available to our classified and our certificated employees, we are looking for units for our employees who have families. We're looking for a real benefit in rent compared to what our employees can get out in the private market, and we're looking for something that is going to really add vibrancy to this community. Those would be my.
Let me just clarify here. So far as I understand it, we are not restarting this process. The proposals that were provided to us as a result of the last year of process are the proposals we are going to consider in January, or are you saying they should change their proposals?
I want proposals that meet our goals, period. So.
Let's see what you, let's see what you come back with. Okay, hold on. Now we got to stop here. Is this actually, we're going to say that we're now going to completely resubmit new proposals, that these, this is so wild, I'm completely stunned. I'm sorry to say it. I don't know where we are right now, but we've gone through a process, and so to me, if what is being asked is essentially to recirculate a new RFP that you've just stipulated from the DIAs, I don't know, I don't know what we're going to see in January, in the next six weeks. I don't, I am a little at a loss here, because we're, if what we're saying is, come back and we're going to interview with regard to your proposals that you submitted as part of the process we laid out, then, okay, let's do it. If in the course of interviewing these developers, they're able to clarify things in a way, or they're able, in the course of our questioning, to commit to stretching in some way, or commit to meeting with our staff to develop a pro forma that stretches what's already, that's, I guess that's part of an interview process, but.
Didn't we hear that, that some people said they had some things in their proposals that didn't come out, that were ignored, or, remember, that was one group that came and said they had this in their proposal and it wasn't.
So I'm going to make a motion without, that is a clarification of, that I'm going to move that we extend the original elements of the RFP with regard to project proponents, particularly with regard to the ban on contacting the Board off DIAs, and if a project, if a proposer would like to clarify for the entirety of the Board in a manner that is publicly accessible through a public search process, that they can send an email to Lee Dolgeroff, and Lee can make a determination to send that on to the Board if there is a clarification needs to be had in relation to the proposals they've submitted. That is the motion I would like to make, so that it is clear that those constraints remain in place. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on the motion? Trustee Bazo.
Yes, thank you, President Pedersen, and I think what I understood, or I guess where I feel is, I don't think it would be appropriate at this time for completely new proposals to people to add to their proposals. I don't think that's appropriate, especially after we've had this public discussion, and there's, you know, I think to maintain the consistency and the fairness of the project, we need to stick with the original proposals. If there is within those proposals something that was, like, maybe they feel like the committee did not understand, we can give them an opportunity to discuss that, but I don't feel at this point like we should just give them free rein to just, you know, be able to, you know, add whatever they want at this point. I think we need to stay within, you know, the proposals we have and let them share information that they might think was miscommunicated.
Is there any further discussion on the motion I made with regard to the constraints on project proponents? See no further discussion, I'll move to a vote on the motion. Student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. I saw Shane. Yeah. That motion passed unanimously, so a student trustee is concurring. Is there any additional? Trustee Hazen.
So I guess, to the point of the format and what comes back to us in these presentations, I appreciate that officers are going to work on this with Lee and the team. I would say, you know, I'm interested in being able to see a very clear comparison, and maybe this comes in an additional staff presentation before we receive these additional presentations, but understanding units that are 80 to like 110% AMI, really looking at the needs of our employees and understanding how the proposed number of units, bedrooms of units, income requirements of these units overlaps with the needs of our employees, so that we can very clearly compare across all the proposals. Again, the bedroom mix by AMI, financial feasibility timeline, really understanding how feasible these timelines are with some of the phasing that's been proposed, and anything else? Oh, and then the lease revenue as well, and the feasibility of what's being proposed in that regard.
Any additional comment or questions from the Board? Trustee, where's Payne?
Definitely the financial outcome for all of them, because I think I had a question to Lee about what was a financial outcome, and he was trying to calculate it on the spot. So if we can get clarity, I mean, the sum for each of them, you were trying to tell me what it was, but if they could give it to in a way that we all can see clearly.
Absolutely, and we'll, we, there were some, as I mentioned, that were more certain than others or were easy to calculate, and we could certainly reach out and request clarification on the ones that we didn't have strong certainty on, so we can really understand both the near-term and long-term cash flows and the certainty of those cash flows, whether they're guaranteed revenue or a percentage of net operating income, which is basically debt service minus the operational costs on a project ongoing, and is it a percentage of NOI, or is it a percent, or is it a rent structure? How's the revenue structured? I think, I appreciate Trustee Hazen's request to talk about how it overlays with our staff needs in terms of, and the AMIs and so forth, and how that, we could certainly do that, provide you with some structures, so that you have a rubric to kind of think about.
Can I guess?
I mean, you know, go ahead, sorry.
Just to clarify on that point, just in simplistic terms, really understanding, I think, both at the very high end and the low end of the AMI sale, really understanding how many total employees do we have that would be eligible, because we know the middle more than enough, but compared to the number of units proposed for each of these projects, so that we really understand the likelihood of housing employees in these units based on what is truly affordable to them.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion? In order to keep this process very clean and transparent, we could put out a questionnaire to all of the proposers to line out the criteria or the explanations that you've asked for and have them respond in writing. And I think I heard also that any comments or clarifications that any proposer wants to make are to go to Mr. Dolgeroff only, and those should be in writing as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think, yeah, also clarifying now what we mean by presentation. So I don't know, Vice President Barrera, if you want to share what you meant, I know for me, I would like to hear, you know, maybe 10 minutes from each of the bidders to let us know what distinguishes their proposals, why they believe them to be most aligned with our guiding principles. Anything we may have missed in the first go-round, I think would be really helpful.
Trustee Bazo.
Yeah, I think in relation to that, I don't think we need to go into detail, I'll be, we've already done that part. So it's just really more, how do you feel that your proposal was better, was, what was like, where did you think maybe the committee was not, might have been confused on certain issues, so having them focus on that more than just like the details of the project, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Trustee Bazo. Any additional comments? See none. We will take a moment here to let those who would wish to leave, leave, and we will proceed with our docket. So I'm going to give people five minutes to, not that you want to leave, I mean, it's so riveting.
...
No.
All right, we have quorum, that's the important thing, and we have all members present except She'll be back in a moment, undoubtedly. And now we will return to the previously scheduled program, and that will be considering item C2 and C3, resolution recognizing December 2025 as Disability Awareness Month and a resolution supporting the implementation of ASIMBULABLE 800 Workplace Readiness Week. Is there a motion to approve items C2 and C3? Trustee Hazen with a motion and trustee Ordus with the second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Stoltz, are there any speakers on this item?
Yes, we have a virtual speaker on C3, actually two virtual speakers, Kelly Mayhew and Jim Miller.
Oh, they're virtually present.
They're here in person. Please come forward.
They have virtually arrived.
Please come forward.
Can we get an extra minute?
Yes, you each have two minutes. How's that?
I am, I'll let him introduce himself. I am a professor of English Humanities and Labor Studies at San Diego City College. I'm also with AFT 1931, and I am also the chair, well, I coordinate Labor Studies at City College and I am also the chair of the CFT's Labor and Climate Justice Education Committee. I wanted to thank you all for bringing this forward, the, the resolution in support of implementing AB 800, the Workplace Readiness Week. We have been actually working on something like this for years. And, you know, in partnership with SCA and other entities across the state, we believe that implementing not just, you know, letting students know about their rights as workers, but also labor history, the importance of work and what their work lives are going to be like is enormously important and should be threaded throughout the curriculum in K-12 and then, of course, on into community and higher ed. Jim and I are also coordinators of our internship program with our union, and both of us are steering committee members for CPI's Students for Economic Justice Program. We believe this is a pipeline for not just future workers, but future organizers and folks who are interested in making the work lives of people much, much better. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim, but I wanted to thank you all for bringing this forward.
And Jim Miller, professor of San Diego City College, also AFT and CFT. And just, I wanted to sort of end by saying, as somebody who's spent nearly 30 years, you know, teaching Labor Studies at San Diego City College, I can attest to the fact that, like, most of the students that I get are incredibly fired up about learning this, and I always ask the question, how many of you learned any of this in high school? And there are no hands. So I'm here to applaud and show deep gratitude for the fact that this is going to finally be, many times they pass things in Sacramento and you don't have implementation. So I think this is just so important. It really is education for being, you know, a citizen and a democracy in an era of historic economic inequality, you know, and great struggles for working people. So, you know, I think that this is a huge thing for the future of the, of the students in this district. Thank you very much.
And as educators, we want a house.
Yeah, if there's a spare, do we have, are there any houses for non-district employees, other district employees?
A fly, we'll see, there's openings. Thank you so much. So we have a motion and a second. We've heard from the public. Do any of my colleagues have any comment, questions or comments with regard to this item? Trustee Hazen.
I just wanted to speak briefly to C2, the Disability Awareness Month resolution, which I'm pleased to join trustee Weishaupt in introducing, and it's really more than just about Disability Awareness Month, but really a call to action. And we spoke to this yesterday, but I want to reiterate that the state and federal government is not providing sufficient funding for special education, and I'm proud to be part of a board in a district that is advocating for full funding of IDEA and really appreciate the work the superintendent is leading to develop and implement a robust plan to transform special education in our district.
Thank you, trustee Hazen. Any, I heard a barbaric yawn.
I've been around so long, I, I remember when we got started with this and taking trips up to LA to advocate on behalf of this whole issue. So it's good that we're doing this. Thank you.
All right. Well, I was wavering on C3, but, but Miller and Mayhew have brought me back in line. Appreciate the comment from the public. We will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. The student trustees concurring. Thank you so much for coming out and sharing with us tonight. Okay, that will take us to item D1. Under D1, any reportable actions from closed session will be published within 24 hours on the district's just website's board actions summary. And that will take us to D3. As are no management appointments to announce under item D2, we will continue to item D3. Dr. Bagula, please provide your informational report.
Thank you. There's a couple of things that I want to actually highlight and celebrate. As many of you already know, we're providing a safe parking lot for unhoused families living in their vehicles, with priority given to families of our students at the formal Central Elementary in City Heights. The safe parking lot opened before Thanksgiving holiday break, and we have referred 24 San Diego Unified families to stay in the 40 available parking slots. While there, families receive services that include housing case managing referrals, access to shower facilities with a food pantry at the Copely YMCA, tangible items including clothing, blankets, and hygiene kits, access to a kitchenette to prepare and heat food, a warm indoor space for parents and students to complete homework, use Wi-Fi and play games, a soccer field and outdoor play area. I appreciate the dignity this gives back to families. While it is unfortunate families are living in their cars, we're grateful to be able to provide them a safe space with access to basic necessities until they can get stably housed. I want to extend my appreciation to our district staff, especially Christie Drake, along with the Copely Price Family YMCA, Jewish Family Service, and the City of San Diego Housing Commission for their partnership. So thank you. Next one, I'm going to tell you about this bell. In October, I shared with you that our district won a 2025 Golden Bell Award for our Equity by Design, the San Diego Unified Office of Graduation Initiative. During the California School Board Association Annual Education Conference, some of us had the opportunity to take part in the event where the honor was awarded. Here's a picture of us with the award, and I have also brought it into the auditorium tonight. I want to congratulate our team. I think, I actually really think this belongs to Dr. Roberson, Dr. Richardson, and Dr. Del Rosario. For those who are unaware, the Equity by Design, the San Diego Unified Office of Graduation Initiative, is the work we've done to reimagine graduation as a gateway to post-secondary success rather than a checklist of credits. Our Office of Graduation has pioneered a systemic, data-driven, and equity-centered approach that is closing opportunity gaps and delivering real results for students who have been historically underserved. So I just want to say thank you to the team. Thank you for representing us well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bagula. We will now hear item E1, which is the first reading of the 2025-2026 Title I Eligibility Ranking Report.
So, thank you, President Patterson. I want to begin by grounding this item in the work that's already underway. This is only for information, so I want to just ground us in that. This is, the proposed 26-27 Title I Eligibility Ranking Report has been reviewed with the DAC or the District Advisory Council over the course of several meetings and will be reviewed once more on December 17. At that final meeting, the DAC will vote on a recommended scenario to bring back to the board. The insight and questions raised here tonight will help inform their thinking as they prepare that recommendation. The board will then receive the DAC's formal recommendation at the second reading for consideration and action at the January 13 meeting. This evening, the first reading of the proposed Title I Eligibility Ranking Report, which is the one you received, requires no action tonight. This is an opportunity for any sort of discussion, clarity, and understanding before the final recommendation brought forth in January. For the 26-27 school year, we're presenting two potential pathways. The first scenario maintains the longstanding rounded threshold of 40%. Under this approach, Tierra Santa Elementary and Dana Middle School would newly qualify for Title I funding. Four schools, Doyle Elementary, Pacific Beach Middle, Stanley Middle, and Henry High, fell below the 40% threshold, but would receive extended eligibility for one additional year to ease the transition. The second scenario lowers the eligibility threshold to 35%, expanding access to Title I funding for schools that are just below the traditional cutoff. Under this approach, four schools, Tierra Santa Elementary, Gage Elementary, Dana Middle School, and Correa Middle School would newly qualify. The four schools currently below 40% would continue to receive Title I support without requiring an extended eligibility. The difference between the two scenarios is the eligibility threshold for Title I funding. Scenario one keeps the threshold at 40%, creating a smaller pool of schools and a higher starting per pupil rate of $620. Scenario two lowers the threshold to 35%, expanding eligibility to more schools and beginning the per pupil rate at $616. The total entitlement to schools remains the same, approximately 23.7 million, but Scenario one concentrates funds among fewer schools while Scenario two spreads those dollars across a broader group of students. Both scenarios have trade-offs, honestly, we can argue both sides on this one, and both carry implications, and that's actually what I want us to be very careful of, for how we distribute resources across schools with high levels of need for 26, 27, and beyond. Tonight's discussion or questions again is an opportunity to understand these implications clearly and to signal the values we want to carry into our final decision in January. This is the first step in a two-part process. The DAC will finalize its recommendation on December 17, and then the board will take action on January 13. Tonight, we're simply opening up the conversation. I believe Dario Gutierrez, who is the director of the SBSA Department, is here and prepared to support. Any questions with that discussion? Thank you.
Oh, I see, you're going to jump into action if there's questions. I like that. Okay. Trustee Hazen.
It's a process question, so in terms of the two scenarios, the 35 versus the 40%, are you seeking direction from the board or is a recommendation going to come from the DAC about what they recommend we move forward with?
My understanding is the DAC is going to come back. We thought it was very important for you to receive all of this information, the same information that they were going, they're going to receive, to study it and make a recommendation to the board.
So at the second read, when we're asked to vote on this, we will simply receive either the 35 or the 40? Is that accurate?
So on December 17, the DAC general body meeting will present not just the Title I ranking, two scenarios, we'll also be presenting the Title I reservations as well, just seeing the whole Title I picture as a whole. At that particular meeting, there's going to be a poll that will be given, and that poll will actually talk about the different scenarios, and we'll be presenting to the board office the results of those scenarios as a recommendation from the board office to the board members for consideration. The DAC is very well aware that they are an advisory committee and they're just going to present the recommendations to board, to board trustees.
And, thank you, I appreciate that. And for clarity, what I'm hearing is any school who's currently receiving Title I funds but may no longer be eligible next year would receive a one-year extension?
Yes.
Irrespective of where they fall.
That qualification is any, we have four schools that drop below the 40% threshold, they have to still be above the 35.00% threshold. If they would have dropped below 35%, they cannot be grandfathered for an additional year, but every one of those four schools still remained above the 35% threshold.
Thank you.
I'll just, oh, I didn't see. No, 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 no.
The DAC is very well aware that they are an advisory committee, and they're just gonna present the recommendations to board trustees.
And, thank you, I appreciate that. And for clarity, what I'm hearing is any school who's currently receiving Title I funds but may no longer be eligible next year would receive a one-year extension?
Yes.
Irrespective of where they fall?
That qualification is any, we have four schools that drop below the 40% threshold. They have to still be above the 35.00% threshold. If they would have dropped below 35%, they cannot be grandfathered for an additional year. But every one of those four schools still remained above the 35% threshold.
Thank you.
I'll just, oh, I didn't see. No, 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 no. All right, all right, thank you. I will just say, I mean, I think there are clearly schools on this, you know, my, my sub-district is largely, is fairly affluent. And, you know, my kid's elementary school, Torrey Pines Elementary, it, it probably doesn't need, I mean, you don't want an infinitely variable scale where you just, you know, it keeps getting smaller and smaller, because at a certain point, that concentrated poverty that we're trying to address with Title I funding is not, is not, is not a factor, or diminishes dramatically as a factor. And so, and yet, there are sites, I think about Correa, presumably it's on its second year of 39, as I recall, we had a bit of this discussion last year. Those kids from Correa just came, they probably came out of Dewey or Cabrillo, or they're still students that, that need that support. And so, I mean, I don't, I'm not going to opine on which of those scenarios necessarily, but I am gonna say, I see sites here that I think could definitely benefit from having that title funding. I understand the trade-off and that there's some point at which you transition into, okay, you don't need title, title funding. But I don't, I, I see a site, knowing Correa firsthand, I think it has a lot of the, it has a lot of those challenges that we associate with, with that kind of concentrated disadvantage. So that's my two cents.
And it's not a hill I'm gonna die on tonight, either way, but I would like to say that one of the things that I would like to see, and I'm always coming up with something different, you know, not gonna be the boring person here. I, I would like to see us focus on, on the students more than on just people and staff. I.e., a lot of times, we hire a resource teacher, we hire somebody to go in there and run the program or whatever, but it would be nice to actually have someone there who actually works with the students, who does something to really let those students know that, yes, I'm funded by Title I, but I'm here for you. And what can we do to help you so that you understand that you're in Title I, and we're gonna do something to make you understand how special you are so that you can improve? Because I think sometimes we get caught up in hiring people whose job it is, is to look nice, to walk down this hallway in heels, or whatever, but, high heels. But the kids don't realize that they're there for them, to help them, that the Title I monies are to help them. So, I don't know. That's why I say something radical. If those kids at Correa, wherever they are, understand, this person is here for us, and she wants or he wants us to achieve, to understand what Title I is about, and how we're going to improve, and maybe it could have some workshops, put some money out on some folks to come in and help train, whatever it is, I don't know, the world is open, but at least to start thinking about that. I know, I can say what I want.
Oh, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I mean, Correa won't get that because it's not ranked right now, but.
What I'm hearing you say, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, is that you would like to see innovative strategies that are in the SBSAs that expand the Title I funds, and we're holding people accountable for their results.
Good summary.
Vice President Barrera.
Thank you, President Patterson. So just, you know, scanning this real quick, we do have schools, and obviously are, you know, schools with a higher percentage of students qualifying for free and reduced lunch, that lose a little bit in the scenario of moving, you know, from 40 to 35. So there's a big benefit, obviously, in including some schools that wouldn't otherwise qualify. But it's not a lot that those schools are losing. It's, you know, I think Lincoln was 7,000, LMC was 5,000, you know, a few of them are $1,000. I'm wondering if we could just total that number up, and if it's not that much money, you know, is there a way that we can do this, that we just keep everybody whole in addition as we, you know, include the schools at the 35%? Yeah.
Can we connect that with how much Title I funds they leave on the table, too? I'm, okay.
Snap.
Yeah, that's something you could bring back to the next meeting, just to have a little bit more of a summary.
It will return for action at a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, I could present.
Well, I was just saying, like, what?
Scenario, I believe it's about $130,000, because it's the two newly qualified schools. I just want to clarify a couple of things. One, when a school is Title I qualified, it's the school that's qualified, so the services and supports are for any student at the school site. The second part that I do want to clarify is like for out-years. I know this year, we have two schools that would be qualified if board takes action on January 13th to do the ranking down to 35%. It might be a different value next year. We might have more schools that would need to do that, would have had needed to be grandfathered. So I know this year's an anomaly. Last year, six schools would have qualified if we would have gone to 35%. So there's always some, a little variability year after year, so I just want to put that out there, especially if board wants to recommend, you know, what, how much more money would it take to maintain the stability? It might change a few further year. Again, board does take action on a yearly basis, so we can come back and talk about other scenarios for future years. We'll come back with that, those new values.
And by the way, Baker is my school. Baker is mine.
Baker.
Richard and I share, but.
Oh, okay. We'll go back and make that adjustment.
So is Chavez. Exactly. Did I, where, I'm getting, I'm coming.
We'll make sure those.
Are you continuing on this? Are you, are you tallying?
No. Always.
You're on a roll. I like it. I like it. Let's do it. Are we good? Okay, we're good. Okay. All right. This item will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Bless you. All right, wow. Okay, we will now consider items F1 through F3 related to student discipline and collective bargaining. Is there a motion on these items? F1, F2. Vice President Barrera with a motion. Do we have a second? Trustee Whitehurst Payne with a second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Tulsa, are there any speakers on these two items? Okay, seeing none. Do any trustees have any questions or comments on these items? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This is for gray hairs only. Trustees.
This is late, 9 o'clock.
You'll be there one day. Trustees, please.
I won't call you.
I got it. Touch of gray. Trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously, rather. All right. We will now get to the board consent agenda. We will now consider approval items G3 through G6, appointment of representatives to the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, appointment of audit committee members and approval of a revised audit committee charter, appointment of board member to the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, and excusal of board member absence. Is there a motion on these items? We have a motion from trustee Whitehurst Payne, a second from trustee Wen. Ms. Tulsa, are there any speakers on these items? Do any trustees have questions or comments on these items? All right, then we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. We will now move to item, I'm looking to make sure we still have our budget team. We haven't lost our budget team. We will now consider item H1, approval of fiscal year 2025-26 First Interim Financial Report, Education Code Section 42-130, and resolution in the matter of intent to declare positive certification at first interim and identify the amount of budget solutions needed for fiscal years 2026-27 and 2027-28. Dr. Bagula, please introduce the item.
Thank you, President Patterson. Today, we have the 25-26 First Interim Financial Report for your approval, and I will begin the presentation and then hand it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Amy Shackelford. So let's go to the next slide. So that's how it's going to roll, but I want to speak to this one. Over the last decade, San Diego Unified has made major investments in our students and our staff. I always want to begin financial opportunity presentations about the investments we make. We have to say how much we're spending on children, because that is our priority, not cutting. Over the last decade, San Diego Unified has made major investments in our students and our staff. Those investments have mattered. Student achievement is rising. Our educators and staff are among the best compensated in California. Our systems are stronger and more aligned than they've ever been. We've expanded programs that reflect our values, like offering full-scale transitional kindergarten before the state required it. Because we believe deeply in early learning and in supporting working families, our health benefits remain among the best in the region because we believe in a well-paid, thriving and healthy engaged workforce. We're very proud of this progress, but we also have financial realities we must now confront. And so what we're looking at here, I'm not gonna go through all of it, sorry, I'm very aware it's 9 o'clock. Tonight, Amy Shackelford, our Chief Financial Officer, will provide you an update on our financial position. And in March, during our next interim budget review, we'll discuss in more detail how we will solve this deficit. With that, I will hand it over to Amy. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Dr. Bagula. Tonight, I am presenting the district's 25-26 First Interim Financial Report as required by Ed Code Section 42-130. This report provides an updated assessment of the district's current year budget and projections for the two subsequent fiscal years. The first interim reflects the district's actual revenues and expenditures through October 31st, along with all known changes that affect our financial position. Staff is recommending that the board maintains a positive certification for the current and subsequent two fiscal years. Tonight, I'm going to focus on just the unrestricted side of the general fund, as that is where our budget deficit resides. As a reminder, our beginning fund balance is $9 million higher as a result of the 24-25 unaudited actuels coming in higher than projected, along with some minor audit restatements of about $87,000. Revenues are now projected to come in about $5 million higher, and both expenditures and contributions are trending lower. Taken together, these updates result in an ending fund balance that is about $60.8 million higher than what was included at the adopted budget. It is important to note that this improvement does not represent newly available funds. The reductions in contributions and expenses are a multi-year approach to implement previously identified budget solutions as discussed in our 45-day budget presentation and our unaudited actuels, and this is to help solve the projected 26-27 budget deficit. Reflected on this slide are the major assumptions used to develop the district's revenue projections. The district continues to experience declining enrollment and average daily attendance, or ADA, which remains the most significant pressures on our LCFF funding. In addition, our unduplicated pupil percentage has decreased slightly in the current year. Because the UPP is calculated as a rolling three-year average, this decline will impact our revenues across all three years. And you will note, by the third year, we are projected to fall below 60%. I just want to point that out because we are a concentration district, which means we are greater than 55%. If we fall below that 55%, we will lose a fairly large chunk of revenues for our concentration dollars, roughly $35 million. 55.
What year?
It's a rolling three-year average, so as soon as the average of your three years hit 50.
Three years from now, two years, just a guess, just a crystal ball, five years, whatever.
Yeah, it, it could be two years, it could be five years. It's, we are fortunately with our reclassification of our EL students, so that's part of the reason why we lost students. But then on the free and reduced side, our numbers are going down, our foster and homeless are going up. So it's, it's, it's a mixed group of why our percentage is going down. And so with San Diego. Yes. So if you could do the affordable housing and get that constructed in the next three years, that would be great, Lee. So with respect to COLA, another significant component of our LCFF funding, we have incorporated the currently published rates for each of the three years. I do also want to note, though, that the recently published Legislative Analyst Office did publish an estimated COLA for next year, and so instead of being 3%, they're estimating 2.5% because we have received five of the eight indicators. We won't know the final until April, but roughly that half percent could be about $6 million loss for us. And that would impact us on an ongoing basis, because it is that COLA, how the formula works. This slide outlines the major assumptions used to develop our expenditure projections. Key cost drivers include the statutory STIRS and PERS pension contribution rates. Health and welfare insurance premiums are increasing significantly effective January 1st, primarily due to rising Medi-Cal costs. For the two out-years, we have assumed our historical average of 7% annual increase, as it's not yet clear if that 11% was a one-time increase or if it's gonna be reflecting a new trend. Utility costs also remain a roller coaster. We continue implementing the district's solar projects. At the same time, we are experiencing rate increases from service providers, including the most recent approved 30% water rate increase that's gonna impact us over the next two years. And lastly, I want to highlight the projected contributions for special ed and routine restricted maintenance. Special ed, special education total expenditures are exceeding the about $400 million, while revenues total about $120 to $125 million over the next three years. So this does result in our contribution that continues to grow each year. This is one of our areas of focus with those one-time dollars and our budget solutions. Being able to use those funds to pay down the contribution helps us on the unrestricted side, as, as I noted in that very first slide. And then you'll also see that the routine restricted maintenance is just projecting to decline slightly. As a reminder, that is statutory required 3% calculation of our total general fund expenditures each year. So at budget adoption, our projected 26-27 budget gap was $138.6 million. Since then, through the 45-day budget and our improved ending fund balance at unaudited actuels, our budget deficit remainder to solve was $80.3 million. Since then, we have continued to work on implementing budget solutions, utilizing those new revenues through the 45-day budgets, and additionally, other savings such as our improved revenues of the $5 million, $12.5 million of personnel savings, which includes our vacancy savings and attrition, $12 million of maximizing restricted funds and other expense adjustments. So the current budget gap to solve is now reduced to $47.7 million as a first interim. This is a significant improvement, but the remaining $47 million are still in process to be resolved, and ideally, as many ongoing solutions that we can implement will help us with that long-term structural deficit. What is not in the first interim? So I want to start with potential LCFF revenue decreases. So we will not know our final ADA for this year until April, when the school year is almost complete. Our P2 attendance report that determines our funded ADA is not due to the state until April. And if the COLA doesn't, does come in around that 2.5%, that could be a loss of about $6 million, depending on what our final attendance and UPP percentage. So, as I also touched upon earlier, we could see potential ongoing significant increases in our health and welfare premiums in the two out-years. We have another double-digit increase that's roughly another $5 million hit that can impact us on the unrestricted side. One area that may present opportunities for the district is the governor's January budget proposal. This includes possible adjustments to Proposition 98 and any new revenue streams. Prop 98 was under-allocated in 24-25 by approximately $1.9 billion. And as a reminder, they did under-allocate it in 25-26. That will be a little ways down the road that we would see the true up and implementation of that. So the 24-25 would impact us in 26-27. The 25-26 would be 27-28. And then additionally, the state is seeing higher revenues from the 24-25 year, and currently, year-to-date, they are also seeing higher revenues. And so it's the ongoing watch of what is the And so it's the ongoing watch of what is the governor going to propose in January? Is it going to be ongoing? Is it going to be block grant? Is it going to be more restrictive in nature, more discretionary in nature? And then what is going to happen between January and June between the legislature and the governor? And that piece, we won't know, obviously, until June, when our budget will already be adopted. But we will get indications along the way about what's going on at the state level. And then lastly, on the federal side, our ongoing uncertainty that we're facing, and so what we've included in first interim is a 10% reduction across our title funds. So the multi-year projection reflects the remaining $47.7 million, as you see circled in red. Looking forward to the '27-28 year, you will note that our budget shortfall is projected about $113 million. The reason why that number jumps back up over $100 million is because of the use of our one-time solutions for the last few year, couple of years. The district maintains our required 2% in all three fiscal years. And you will note that at the bottom, that we are utilizing $59.766 million of that improved $60 million ending fund balance. So that will get incorporated into our '26-27 budget as part of our gap closure of the $138 million. And that leaves $0 to apply to the '27-28 potential deficit. In addition to the general fund, the district is also required to provide updates to our other funds. We do have a total of 11 funds. It's approximately $3.5 billion that we manage, with the exception of the general fund. These funds are restrictive in nature, so unfortunately, we can't transfer those ending fund balances to help us on the general fund side. But fortunately, all of our funds are projected with that positive ending fund balance. We are continuing to develop a comprehensive set of budget solutions to close the remaining $47.7 million. These efforts reflect ongoing evaluations of our operations and programs. A detailed list of budget solutions will be included as part of our second interim report that is due on March 15th. BRT continues to work with Central Office and with school sites to evaluate and to develop those remaining solutions. So for next steps, staff recommends positive certification and approval of the board resolution. We will return with updated information after the governor's January budget proposal, and we will bring forward that detailed budget list of deficit strategies as part of our second interim reports. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Amy. Before I even got motion, I got a motion. So we have a motion from Trustee Wyatt's Pain and a second from Trustee Ordas. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Stoltz, any speakers on this item? Scared them all off. Do any of the trustees have questions or wish to discuss the item? That's okay, all right. It looks like you don't have many questions here, but we're looking forward to, we'll see you again in January? Excellent.
I just have one thing to say. And that is, I keep hearing on the news that we've got this big deficit of 47 million. And she just told us how many billions of dollars we operate with. Was it three and a half or whatever it was?
$45 billion.
Yes. And 47 is a high, but that's not, that's not the end of the world for us. So thank you all for doing a good job.
All right. Go into the holidays with that. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We have no apparent further discussion from the dais. We will therefore move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. You're an eternal student. Student trustees, please vote. There we go. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. And that brings us to Item H2, which is approval of the 2026 legislative priorities. Dr. Bagula, you're back. Please introduce the items.
Trustees, you have received our proposed 2026 legislative advocacy priorities and policy principles for your approval tonight. There will be no presentation, but I know you have read them, and for anyone in the audience and at home who has not, let me give you a short overview. We have a variety of needs that we must advocate for at the state and federal levels, but the greatest of them all right now is to support fully funding our special education. Special education services cost us more than $400 million annually, but we only receive about $125 million from state, federal, and local sources. The remaining $275-plus million must come from the district's general fund. This is not sustainable, as what was discussed in the first interim presentation. We will advocate for the state of California to make investments in behavioral health supports and early interventions, and federal advocacy will include working to secure increases in Individuals with Disabilities Education Act funding. Other areas of focus of our advocacy are: strengthen equity-focused investments in the local control funding formula to help address the affordability crisis and improve outcomes for our most vulnerable students; prioritize student safety; support the success of English learners; support military-connected families and students; protect federal title programs; maintain educational programs at Federal Department of Education. With that, I ask for your approval. Dr. Sierra Cook, Director of Government Relations, is available for any questions via Zoom if she has not logged off yet. But I believe you all received this and have gone over them.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice President Barrera and a second from Trustee Wen. Ms. Stoltz, any speakers on this item?
Actually, yes. Is Issey Martinez still here?
Oh, Issey told me she was tired and turning, she said she was going to talk, but now she's turning.
She was the only one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. Do any of the trustees have any questions or comments? I'll just say, I'm very appreciative of Sierra. I think she's a huge asset for us in Sacramento. We appreciate her, and I think when we saw this, the documents associated with the item, we all, yeah, that sounds good, just done a great job. And with that, we will move, if there's no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. There's more, wait. We will now consider Items H5 through H7, approval of easements to the City of San Diego and San Diego Gas and Electric. I have a motion from Trustee Wyatt's Pain and a second from, I saw Trustee Bazo first, I'm going to give it to her on this one, but. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Stoltz, any speakers on this item? Okay. Do any of the trustees have questions or wish to discuss this item in another way? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. Oh, no, wow. It's a rare, no, can we? I did that once. Okay, we'll take the vote again. Student trustees, please, I like it though, yep. All other trustees, please vote. I did that, yeah, I did that once, man. We gotta look down.
Right here, but I'm actually-
Yeah, hey. So all our, all of our, all of our carriages are turning into pumpkins at this point. So with that, we will, that motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. We will now consider our superintendent's consent agenda, Items I1 through I45. Consent items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion followed by a vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the board, member of the public, or staff requests that specific items be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Any agenda item removed will be voted upon following the motion to approve, the motion and the vote to approve the consent agenda. Do the boards have, does the board, first of all, do any members of the public, have they removed anything?
No, there are no public speakers, but I do have one clarification for the record. Item I40, the title of the item is Ratification of Agreement with San Diego Comic Convention, DBA Comic-Con Museum. There's some extraneous words after that in the published agenda, which do not belong there, but the item is correct as it was written. So I'm just correcting the record.
Let's go ahead, strike the extraneous. Oh, hold on one second. Do any of the board members have anything to remove? No, do any staff, have staff removed anything? Okay, now, now we have a motion from Trustee Wyatt's Pain. Do I have a second? There we go, Trustee Ordas with the second. I'm sorry, Trustee Wen, my bad. That's it, I'm losing my, yeah, I'm losing mine. Exactly. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and the second is from Trustee Wen, again. And we do not discuss this item since that's what makes it consent. So we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All right. All other board members, please vote. Okay, that motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. Okay. Now, I believe, do we take? Not in a comment, and then we go to the vote? Yeah, okay, good. All right, we will now receive public testimony on items not on the agenda. Ms. Stoltz, have we received any requests?
Yes, we have several requests, and it looks like some folks are still here, so we'll go and order. Arlene Newbarth? You have two minutes each.
I had my friend signed up again because, you know. I'm here to remind this board of something written directly into the administrator contract, a savings clause, which means any mandate that conflicts with the law is automatically void. And yet SDUSD continues to enforce mandates that directly violate state law. Let me quote Education Code. Chapter 8, Early Primary Programs, 8970. The legislature hereby finds and declares all of the following. Preschool and kindergarten programs have become more academically oriented with an emphasis on paper and pencil, seatwork, and a decreased emphasis on other essential age-appropriate curricular elements, such as language development, familiarity with stories, music, and oral language experiences, artistic exploration, social interaction, and large muscle development. 8971. Early primary program means an integrated, experiential, and developmentally appropriate educational program for children in preschool, kindergarten, and grades 1, 2, 3 inclusive that incorporates various instructional strategies and authentic assessment practices, including educationally appropriate curricula, heterogeneous groupings, active learning activities, and language development, use of concrete manipulative materials in the classroom, planned articulation among preschool, kindergarten, and primary grades, and parent involvement and education. The kindergarten school day program. I still have seven seconds. The kindergarten school day program may exceed four hours exclusive of recesses, provided that both of the following conditions are met. The extended kindergarten program takes into account ample opportunity for both active and quiet activities within an integrated, experiential, and developmentally appropriate educational program.
Sabrina Bowkin. Riley Morgan. Lilly Higman. You have two minutes.
Thank you, board members and administration. I understand that our IB programs will be fully funded next year, and we want to thank you for that. But we want to take this opportunity to also share some great news and great things that are happening in our cluster. The IB program, as you know, is the anchor to our cluster, supported by the Mandarin and Spanish programs, as well as our award-winning music program and the incredible engineering and marine sciences programs. The IB program benefits all students at our secondary schools by training and retaining highly qualified educators who provide rigorous coursework for all grade levels and classes. This includes students who choose vocational careers. About 40% of Mission Bay students are candidates for the IB World Diploma this year. We've grown fourfold, up to 130 students graduating this year with the IB Diploma, starting at 2018 with only 39. Overall, 70% of our students are taking at least one IB course. Mission Bay is the third-largest IB program in California. That's over 100 IB programs in the state. Last year, students in the class of 2025 graduated with the equivalent of 461 college courses. That is, for one student, that was a $30,000 savings at UCLA with 30 credits. Year after year, our students are accepted into extremely competitive universities and colleges across the country and the world. The PBMS middle years program is implemented school-wide with over 99% participation in the eighth-grade community project, and I think some of you have been to see those programs. Every year, we have students transferring to Mission Bay High School and PB Middle School from charter and private schools. We've already had many of those students come, take our tours, so we know, hopefully, they'll be coming. And we've had waiting lists this year to come to our school. So we want to thank you for allowing us this time to highlight our incredible students, educators, administration, staff, and the community. Thank you so much.
Yes, hello, my name is Jana Scherzpotowski-Roe. I wanted to add on to what Lilly just shared. I'm a proud parent of a sophomore and senior at Mission Bay High School. Both of my kids have been in the IB program, starting at Albert Einstein Academies through elementary school. So I firsthand witnessed the positive impact it makes on their life, but not just academically. They thrive as a person. And sharing differently in my work, I work for a statewide nonprofit that's focused on mental health and suicide prevention. So we know that some of the core protective factors for suicide prevention is belonging, feeling connected to adults, to their peers, and also problem-solving. So the IB program and the curriculum, the amazing school community, is a core contributor to really building these schools that have a culture of belonging. So I'm greatly appreciative of the investment, the continued investment in IB. Thank you so much.
All right, I'll make it quick, it's so late. Also about like IB, so good evening, my name is Uva Zenz, and I'm the proud parent of like two students here in our district. My daughter Cecilia is in 11th grade in the IB program, Mission Bay High School, and my son Max is currently in middle school. Like, it's a private middle school, like the child school, wonderful, 10 kids in the class, and he hopes to attend Mission Bay specifically because of the IB offerings. Interestingly enough, like in the school, there's only 10 there. Traditionally, they all go to Parker, like pick any of the private schools. Four of the kids, four of the 10s, kids intend to go to Mission Bay exclusively because of the IB program. So I just want to point that out, I find that very interesting. I just quickly want to share why IB matters so much to our family, why it's an asset worth protecting. Apart from like exceptional academic experience, my daughter really learns how to think critically, communicate clearly, and connect ideas across subjects. Those are not just high school skills. I think these are the exact skills colleagues and future employees look for. And being terrified about what AI brings in the future, I mean, you probably are too, I think these things are even more valuable today than they've ever been. So I mean, like, it's a very exceptional education that they can get. I think also IB teaches students how to manage so many workloads, plan ahead, and stay organized, and just like really prepare them for the reality of college-level expectations. One other thing, and then I'm sure I'm being cut off, but like you hear me like butchering the English language a little bit, so I am, like, I'm European. And we, as a family, really do love the global perspective. I think that's more important than it's ever been. I think the kids really learn this. It's not only our kids that really learn this, it's kids that don't have any exposure prior, where a lot of the parents don't even have a passport. Like, they just like come in, they just want to see what's going on in the world, and they get the exposure. They actually have to do community service, they have to put 150 hours in, which I think is extremely valuable- They have to put 150 hours in, which I think is extremely valuable and really teaches them valuable lessons. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
And we have two virtual speakers. Jalina Bodinett.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Yelena Bodine, and I just wanted to share a little bit about my own background, similar to what the other parents have just said. I also have a couple of kids at PB Middle as well as Mission Bay High. And it's just been great watching them really open up their minds through this inquiry-based learning that the IB program offers. I myself am originally from the former Yugoslavia, and so having gone through a conflict at a young age, I really appreciate this internationally-minded curriculum as a way to allow our kids to think outside of the box, to be aware of larger issues outside of our small communities, and how those can also impact us over time. And so I just wanted to urge this board to continue to offer this program because I've heard, I've seen firsthand how much it's been helping my kids and their peers to gain a wider, more internationally-minded perspective in the world. Thank you so much.
And Petra Ives. Petra Ives. Last call for Petra Ives. Please unmute. She's not speaking. That concludes the meeting.
All right, yes. She's petrified. So I think that brings us to the close of our meeting. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for sitting through a very lengthy meeting. We appreciate you coming out. And we take your input very seriously. We obviously value the IB program. And with that, we will move to our last segment, which is conducting the annual organization of Board of Education, the election of Board President and Vice President. Ms. Stoltz, can you please conduct the election?
Yes. Pursuant to Education Code Section 35143, the President and Vice President shall be elected from the members of the Board at the Board's annual meeting, held within a 15-day period that commences with the second Friday in December, following the regular election in a year in which a regular election for governing Board members is conducted. Board Bylaw 1002 describes the process for electing officers. The President and the Vice President shall each receive the votes of a majority of the full membership of the Board before being declared elected. The election shall be conducted using written ballots on which every Board member's name appears. Separate ballots will be cast for the President and Vice President. Each Board member, including the student trustees, will vote for one adult Board member for the office being voted upon until an adult Board member has received at least three votes. Following each ballot, the Board Action Officer will announce the results of the vote, identifying the members voting for each candidate. Prior to the casting of ballots, Board members may speak in support of a particular candidate. Under this procedure, all adult Board members are eligible for election, and there will be no nominations. Board Bylaw 1003 sets the term of office as one year during the period commencing with their election, and until their successors shall be duly elected and qualified. The term for the next set of officers is December 10, 2025, through December 15, 2026. And I have provided pink.
I just have a clarification. Have we, oh, I don't, hold on. I just want to clarify, is this because we haven't changed the language? Presumably, if the student trustees voting, the...
The student trustees vote.
Yeah, but the threshold's still three, which would not be a majority.
Correct. The student trustees are still advisory.
Oh, I see. So when we're counting that three, it would have to be three adult.
Three adults.
I see. Okay, understood.
And you each have a ballot, a pink one and a green one?
I get to talk. Listen, people. First of all, I want to say that I do appreciate all the support and love and support that you guys have given me this year. And normally, I would be up to follow Richard as the Vice President, and I can do it. You think I can do it?
Yes.
I can do it? I could do it. But, 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 I, I would like to yield to the next person in line, Sabrina. So I'd like Richard and Sabrina. That's just my opinion, and you guys are free to do whatever you want. I will step back in next year if I'm still alive and running around like the rest of you. And I will be, yes. But for this year, I'm going to devote myself to District E. Okay? So, thank you.
Well, any further discussion?
All right. Everyone has a pink ballot and a green ballot. If you could please complete your pink ballot for President, and I will collect them and announce the... Very official. And it is a unanimous vote for Richard Barrera to be President once again. And let's see about Vice. And Trustee Bazo has received the majority of the votes for Vice President, and there was one vote for Hazen for Vice President. So it's Richard and Sabrina.
With that, I would like to congratulate our new Board Officers for 2026 and hand, hand the gavel. First of all, can we all just give a big hand to President Perez? Despite, despite the fact that I drove you crazy on your last meeting.
I cried about many things, but not this.
So this meeting is now adjourned. We have our joint meeting with the Community College District on this coming Tuesday, the 16th, at City College. And our next full meeting of the San Diego Unified Board will be January 13. Thank you.